Do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Graham moved and Ms. Bond seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Chabaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
I need a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each number's knowledge, members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. Only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Graham moved and Ms. Froggett seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Chabaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
We have one action from closed session.
I would like to make a motion to long-term suspend Student A until the end of the year.
Second.
Ms. Froggett seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Just a second, please. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Chabaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Our next item is awards and recognitions. Dr. Meyer?
Okay, let me first say that how great it is to be here tonight and had a great first two weeks in Montgomery County Schools and a lot of folks here tonight. But let me tell you what it tells me is you care about your students, you care about your kids' education, and you care about how we provide that education. And so I'm looking forward to hearing many of you have things to say tonight. So very good. All right. So thank you, Ms. Karan. You and I will head to the floor. Dr. Satan, come up for some honorees.
At this time, we will begin our honors and awards recognition for this evening. Dr. Graham, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, will come forward to recognize Dr. Jonathan Schultz, Supervisor of Mathematics, for his work on the 2016 Mathematics Standards and of Learning Steering and Review Committee.
Dr. Schultz, if you will join me at the front. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize Dr. Jonathan Schultz. He is our Supervisor of Mathematics. He's being recognized for his service on the 2016 Mathematics Standards of Learning Steering and Review Committees for the Virginia Department of Education. The Virginia Department of Education acknowledged that he was invited to serve not only because of his expertise and mathematics content and pedagogy, but also for his expertise in leadership. Thank you, Dr. Schultz.
And now, Dr. Graham will recognize our Senior of the Month for the month of January 2016.
So tonight, we're continuing the commitment of recognizing student achievement and accomplishments. The new Senior of the Month selections have been made by the high school principals in Montgomery County and their staffs. The activities of these seniors reflect the full range of opportunities in the school division, ranging from fine arts to vocational experiences and to athletic accomplishments. Invite you afterwards to view their pictures out in the foyer. Tonight, three seniors are being recognized. We will begin with Christiansburg High School, followed by Eastern Montgomery High and Blacksburg High. Dr. Sears, would you come forward?
Dr. Satan, Dr. Meyer, members of the board, it is with a great pride that I present to you Christiansburg High School's January Senior of the Month, Alan Zhang. Alan is accompanied this evening by his mother, Mai Wah Wang. Would you please come forward at this time to be recognized? Alan was selected to represent Christiansburg High School as our Senior of the Month based on his academic achievements, contributions to a number of school programs, and incredibly positive attitude. His Math Mac coach, Dee Davidson, said that Alan has been a pivotal player in Math Mac for four years. He is one of the players I depend on for a successful Mac season. The CHS band director, David Miller, stated Alan Zhang is an extremely reliable student. His leadership and example have been pivotal in the success of the band program. you Eastern Montgomery High School's Senior of the Month, Ms. Ashlyn Faith East. It struck me as noteworthy that both of these teachers described Alan's role in their programs She's accompanied tonight by her mother, Melinda Walters Dillon. as pivotal. If they would please come forward. Although it may not be the flashiest word, pivotal is defined as of crucial importance EMHS marketing teacher Janet Jennings had this to say about our Senior of the Month: in relation to the development or success of something else. This word describes Alan to a T. He is a pivotal player in every role he assumes, and we are very enthusiastic to see what he accomplishes after graduation. It is my pleasure to present to you Alan Zhang. "Ashlyn is a wonderful young woman and a great student to have in class. She is always ready to learn and anxious to help others. Her kind personality lets her fit into any situation within the classroom structure. I love having Ashlyn in my class. She is always wearing a sweet smile, and she makes me smile." Congratulations. the last minute. And so I get to introduce the Blacksburg Senior of the Month, and it is a great privilege to be able to do that. I'd like to introduce to you Anna Rebecca Byer. She is accompanied tonight by her mother, Sarah Byer. If they would come forward. Mr. Kitts, principal at Blacksburg High School, had this to say about Anna. Anna has always demonstrated herself to be an outstanding young woman with a potent academic skill set and humble, engaging personality. She maintains an excellent school record in addition to devoting many hours to serving her school community and the community abroad in a number of capacities. Anna has a unique capacity to not only excel in the classroom, but to engage her peers to find their own measure of academic success. She is very supportive, kind, and compassionate to her peers. Anna is an excellent ambassador of the Bruin family and is very deserving of the recognition as one of our most outstanding members of the senior class. Congratulations to Anna, and thanks for letting me do this.
All right, that concludes our awards and recognitions. Thank you. We will now take a 10-minute break so that Dr. Myers and the board members can congratulate tonight's winners. Thank you.
The school board sets aside up to 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. The screens through the room and on the laptop will indicate when the three minutes is over. There are sign-ups, and we have 37 citizens sign up. What I would like to do is I will read two names at a time, and please, in order to respect everyone's allotted time, please be ready to come to the podium. And as soon as you come, state your name and your address, and please be mindful of the time, so we'll be able to hear all the citizens. So first two names, Lori Roop and Maria Barlow.
Are we ready? Okay, Lori Roop, 506 Switchback Road. Good evening, board members and Dr. Meyer. We come before you again with great respect and a great hope that you will hear our concerns and our compromise to the approved time change for the next school year. Our group, Parents Who Want to Be Heard, has studied this extensively over the last nine months. Some of our members have been studying longer. We understand that the adolescent sleep issues, and we acknowledge them, but we still do not understand the blatant disregard for the sleep requirements to the development of elementary children and the family difficulties that this decision will create. It has been mentioned that smaller kids are up earlier, sometimes in toddler years and early elementary, that could be the case, but as is also in the case that information on adolescents that they are different. While some find it easy to be able to go to sleep around 7:30 or 8:00 p.m., it just isn't conducive for everyone. So where the proposed decision accounts for the same phenomenon in teens, it doesn't allow for the same in elementary students. Our elementary kids will suffer. The data shows that. Development, behavioral problems, obesity, anxieties, parental involvement, all suffer with the idea of this current change. You should acknowledge that, just as we have to acknowledge the adolescent studies. Secondary students are opposed to this change because the one-hour loss in the afternoon may make them decide between a potentially scholarship-winning activity such as a sport, band, choir, or working a job. They will not be able to assist with sibling care in the afternoon. They will not have time to get everything done in order to get to bed with this extra hour of sleep. Governor, school students, teams who have practiced before, school students who may have to ride the bus with elementary students to make the bus routes work, young middle school students who are not responsible enough to be left alone will not benefit from this change. Plenty of secondary students will not be helped. Many seeing get up earlier is a way through the school year earlier to have more time in the afternoons for sports, homework, and for their jobs. Research also showed that a minimal shift in at least 25 to 30 minutes in a start time after 8:00 a.m. had a dramatic improvement in sleep and health of adolescents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two names are Dana Lacy and Sherri Trout-Wendike.
Good evening. I'll make this as quick as I can. My name is Mariah Barlow, and I live at 1900 Forest Lane in Blacksburg, and I'm the parent of a Kips Elementary first grader. Great school, by the way. I'm here to express my concerns that this time change, though well-intentioned, is hasty, misguided, and unjust. In trying to solve the problem of sleep-deprived teens, you've effectively shifted the burden of lost sleep and reduced family time to our youngest children, who will suffer even more profound consequences. Make no mistake, this is not a solution. It's recklessness. This is no simple matter of getting little kids up earlier. It's a major shift with significant repercussions for the well-being of elementary students and their families. Here are just a few of the problems. The decision is poorly reasoned. It delays start times for older students based on research, but moves up start times for younger kids based on conjecture that they tend to rise earlier. The decision robs sleep from our youngest kids, who need it most. Experts say they need nine to 11 hours versus eight to 10 for teens. It places kids as young as five at dark predawn bus stops for much of the year. It ignores emerging research, like the University of Kentucky study, that says swapping start times is a bad idea. It creates a lot of questions about childcare. Can families afford it? Do we have capacity? What kind of quality can we actually expect? My biggest concern is that it reduces already scarce family time for young children who need it the most. In a typical working household, elementary kids will be in school and daycare for over 10 hours a day. That leaves about three waking hours for meals, homework, extracurriculars, and getting ready for bed and school. It does not leave time for quality family interaction. To say that we can't turn back now because too much planning has been invested is a ludicrous political argument. Why is it wiser to follow through on a hasty mistake than to exercise caution and contemplation? What's our hurry? No harm will come from delaying to investigate unexplored options. Why forge ahead when so many in our community are warning that this change will have long-term, far-reaching consequences? In an era where children and parents face demanding schedules and less time together, this decision is yet another blow to the health of our families from an unsuspected source: our school system. Our children transcend politics, religion, test scores, and the pressure to follow the pack. Please delay this change, and take another look with open minds and hearts. Be the solution and not the problem. Our children are counting on you.
Dana Lacy, Sherwood Drive in Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm going to introduce you to a compromise proposal. I thought it was 100% correct. Unfortunately, I've been informed of stuff in the last few minutes that I'm trying to make it work. It's found on page three in front of you. I was hoping you were going to be able to have it in front of you. Our system does not have consistent lengths of school days nor start times as it is. Some secondary students go 6.75 hours a day, some go 6.83, which are longer than required. We understand that's because of the DOA banking system that allows us to miss school days without having to make them up. The minimum required day is five hours and 30 minutes of instructional time, 990 hours or 180 days. Apparently, we go 180 days. Our elementary students go 167 days that are full days, which are six and a half hours, and then they have 13 early dismissals at four hours a day. This actually changes their bank day to 23 days bank per school year. The secondary students attend for 180 days, but seven of those are early dismissals, which their school days go from 6.75 to 6.83. They have the seven early release days ranging from 4.2 to 4.4 hours per day. The secondary students are actually currently banking over 25 days a year, maybe up to 35. I may have to check my numbers again. It's important because the additional length of the day for the secondary students is what causes the bus time compression in the afternoon can be compensated for in the morning. At the length of day, our secondary students are attending school where excessively banking days that is above that of their elementary counterparts. Most of these bank days will be used for inclement weather events such as the potential snowstorm this weekend. So our idea is a little outside the box, but it has great potential to help the secondary students minimize the concerns for elementary students and utilizes the extra bonus of using an established pattern to minimize the catastrophic potential of risks. So here's our proposal. It allows a 30-minute delay in the start of the day for secondary students, 8:10 and 8:20 respectively, only shifts their day 15 minutes later than it is now, which is minimal, and only shifts the elementary day by 10 minutes to 9:10. You have to decide if the safety, sleep, and health, which is the overall project goal of the secondary students, is worth 15 minutes extra that adds the excessive banking so that the results could be beneficial for all and not cause the potential catastrophic consequences we as a group are so afraid of. Thank you for your time tonight. We hope that you make the best decision. Please use all this work that we have done, use the sleep we have lost, the worry, the tears, and the anxiety that this current change will cause. Use it for the better. Use it to help everyone. Maya Angelou stated, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better." And I think that applies to this. Thank you, and we respectfully ask for your consideration. And I will get new numbers to you.
The next two names are Andrew Wendike and Mark Stern.
My name is Sherri Trout-Wendike. I live at 635 Tower Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. Regarding the time change, at the January 5th meeting, Mr. Chabaka, you spoke about responsibility and stated, quote, "For us to change something for this fall, there has to be a pretty good reason for it. We'll look around. We're going to give you plenty." The time change was approved on the recommendation of a biased committee in which a committee member who owns a daycare center stands to gain financially with the huge influx of elementary children into evening daycare. A responsible school board would reject a time change that has a detrimental negative effect on the majority of the community, one based on a single study and a single survey that didn't even reach all of the affected families. A responsible school board would admit that they made a hasty decision based on insufficient data recommended by a biased committee. A responsible school board would vote to immediately halt the implementation of the time change until such a time as new unbiased committees could be formed to research the effects such a change would have on secondary-aged children and elementary-aged children. A committee with members who stand to gain nothing from the outcome, who do multiple surveys and research at least three to five studies from areas similar to ours socially and economically on both the positive and negative effects of such implementation. If this was done, why wasn't it shared? A responsible board would research the projected economic future of the entire community when faced with a substantial financial downturn, because let me assure you that families like mine will face financial hardship trying to pay for daycare, and the businesses, such as restaurants and retail stores that rely on those families, will have decreased profits because those families will be putting their spending money into daycare instead. One-third of my business comes from families, and there's no way we can afford to put our two children in daycare as it is. Now, you're going to take a third of my business and force daycare expenses on me? Ms. Karan, you asked for clarity and direction at that same meeting. The clarity you asked for can be found in the answer to this question. Do you want to be a responsible school board, one that shows care and understanding for its community? This is a new board. Don't make the old board's mistakes. Ms. Karan, your direction is clear. Rescind the time change, please. It will do more harm than good, and we don't want it. Thank you.
Next two names are Emmy Hogan and Lisa Carter.
My name is Andrew Wendike. I live at 635 Tower Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I am taking time away from my homework this evening to help you, to help you make a better decision about me and my baby sister's future. I am here to ask you to keep the school start time the same. Don't fix something that is not broken just because Run Oak did. My parents always told me, "If all of your friends jumped off a bridge, would you?" My parents always told me, "If all of your friends..."
Keep the order in the room, folks, so we can hear.
Please don't change the current start times. My real reason for speaking today is for my baby sister. Last year, I almost got kidnapped at my bus stop. I was in fourth grade. Now, my baby sister will have to wait in the dark when she goes to school if you change the times. It's harder for a five- or four-year-old to fight off a kidnapper than a 12- or 15-year-old. Also, have you thought of the families that you will hurt because of this change? The cost of daycare is high. Many families cannot afford it, not to mention that there aren't enough daycare centers in the county to hold all of us kids that need it. My parents had to wait over a year to get me into the daycare I used to go to. If my parents have to get a second job just to pay for daycare, I will never get to spend time with them. This means me and my sister will be raised by strangers instead of my parents. I would rather spend time with my mom and dad and my baby sister. Wouldn't you? Please, don't ignore all of the reasons that us in the community have done just because we were not on the committees. After all, we are the ones that have to live with what you decide. I understand that your hurts are in the right place, but sometimes the wrong decision made for the right reason is still a wrong decision. So please think wise and make the right decision for people. Thank you for your time. I need to go home to do my homework now. I hope you will set a good example for us kids and go and do your homework. Thank you.
I can't believe I have to follow that. My name is Mark Stern. I live at 1310 Village Way South. Thank you for your service and for listening. I'd like to make two points. Before coming, I reviewed one of the PowerPoints that was online, and it said when the decision was made, there was evidence about adolescent sleep deprivation and its impact, and theory about younger kids and the impact of sleep deprivation for them. Well, there's evidence as well for younger kids, and I'll point you to two specific studies, one by DeWald et al. in Sleep Medicine Review in 2010. It was a meta-analysis of 17 studies that looked at kids age eight to 18. It was looking at the impacts of sleep deprivation on school performance for that age range. And it actually found that it impacted the entire range, but it actually impacted the lower, younger end of that range more than it did the older impact of that range. Another study that's already been cited, the University of Kentucky study by Keller et al. With the exception of the poorest schools, earlier start times in elementary schools led to poor test scores, lower school rank, and more student absence. So really, the evidence is there to say that all of our kids need more sleep. So shifting this burden doesn't really make a whole lot of sense in a lot of ways. It's not that easy just to say, "Put your kids to bed earlier." If only they'd listen, that would be great. So I'd like to entertain the idea of trying to revisit the idea of pushing schools back, school start times later for everybody. And I know that was dismissed early in the game, but I never heard a reason why that's infeasible. So if that could be made public, that'd be great. The other point I want to make is about after-school programming. So according to the survey that you all did about a year ago, about a quarter of parents would need after-school program that didn't before, that's elementary school parents, and everyone would need more. 50% said they would have problems with work schedule and childcare. We seem to be moving forward without concern, not only for the quantity of after-school program, but also the quality. We have major quality issues in after-school program. I can speak for my district that a lot of us parents have changed our entire work schedule in our lives to avoid some of the after-school options. I also run after-school programs at some of the local schools, and the red tape and bureaucracy for getting my Virginia Tech students into those programs to provide high-quality after-school programming is ludicrous. I run the same program every year, same program, and this year it took eight weeks to get into the schools, filling out paperwork and waiting. We need to streamline that. If we're going to move forward, we need better after-school programming and a lot more of it for our elementary schools. That includes enrichment, not just childminding. So the two key points are, the evidence is there that everybody needs more sleep, not just the adolescent kids, and we've already heard about the impact for younger folks as well. At the same time, we really need to be looking at what goes on in after-school programs and how to make that better. And if it's a school board pushing this change, it really is the school board's responsibility to take up that charge and figure out what to do. Thanks. (applause)
Next two individuals are Christina Lacy and Johanna Hicks.
Good evening, Amy Hogan. I'm at 506 Hartwood Crossing in Blacksburg. I remain extremely concerned about the impact to sleep for elementary students. In the surveys sent out over a year ago, nearly 60% of elementary parents reported that their kids currently get the recommended nine or more hours of sleep per night. For many practical reasons, most families will not be able to advance bedtimes by a full hour to accommodate this change, so the result for most will be decreasing sleep by an hour a night. For the 40% of kids reportedly already getting less than nine hours of sleep a night, the impact will be even more detrimental. The research studies on sleep related to cognitive and behavioral functioning in children ages five to 12 show markedly negative impacts caused by sleep restriction. Again, in the surveys, the overwhelming majority of all categories of respondent groups rated students' health and sleep as number one or two most important factors for consideration in this change. This is of utmost concern for us. Personally, I'm currently dragging my six- and seven-year-olds out of bed at 7:00 in the morning to get ready for school every morning. They go to bed at 7:30 PM. I'm very worried about them being chronically sleep deprived on the new schedule and in fact can't let this happen as a parent. Any parent, grandparent, or teacher in this room and beyond can tell you that the behavioral and emotional impacts of inadequate sleep are immediately observable. The impacts over time with ongoing sleep restriction will be great, and I can't imagine what their challenges would be as adolescents. My other personal concern is after-school care of the younger children. Most of the year, my ninth-grade daughter is home to help watch our kids until my husband or I can get home in the afternoon. This winter, she's running track and practices every day after school, so we no longer have that coverage, but with the current dismissal times, we're able to take advantage of Harding's after-school program on a flex basis, as needed, and roughly only about an hour a day. With a dismissal at 2:30, our kids will need full-time after-school care and additional costs to our family of nearly $400 per month based on the current rates. This is not insignificant. Additionally, after-school programs say they can accommodate more kids, but having gathered no input from parents, I can't imagine that they have an idea of how many more kids will need care and how this will impact their space, staffing, costs, and ultimately the rates. The way I see it, you have three options from here. One is to do nothing, to let the approved plan move forward despite the numerous risks and concerns, particularly for elementary-aged children and their families, and see how it goes. Two, adopt a different, more incremental adjustment to schedules for next year, one that is responsive to the many concerns and minimizes the risk for all students. Or three, delay the implementation by a year and reengage with the community in a truly collaborative approach to identify a more acceptable solution that better meets everyone's needs. I understand the desire to be responsive to adolescent needs, but still believe it is irresponsible to do something likely to have such negative impacts and greater cumulative effects on our younger students. I urge you to make a balanced response that is truly taking all the needs of our students and families into account, one that better supports the success of all. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Carter, and I live at 365 Windsor Drive. My son Max over here is having a great year at Christiansburg Primary. He's a kindergartner, and we couldn't be happier with our experience. We're really fortunate, my husband and I. We both work full-time, but we've been able to adjust our schedules so that we're still able to get Max off Ms. Sally's bus every afternoon at our house, and I truly believe that this is what has eased his transition into kindergarten. I was really concerned going into it because we've talked about body clocks in the past of teenagers. Well, unfortunately for my husband and I, Max's body clock would like him to go to bed at 10:00 and sleep until 8:30 or 9:00. It's just how he is. He's five. We can't explain it to him. We've tried. It has not worked. By Thursday in the week already, he's starting to drag. I can only imagine next year. Honestly, as a working parent, I wouldn't want him having to go to bed at 7:00 o'clock at night because it cuts into our family time. He goes to a little ninja class at Virginia Techniques, and it goes until 7:30, and we usually get something to eat afterwards. I don't know how he'll even be able to do that next year. If the change, as proposed and as is already voted on, takes place, Max is going to have to go to after-school care, which really breaks my heart because there are very few options for after-school care, as has been mentioned by some of the other families, and not a ton of quality options available. I guess we can just take the money that we were spending on ninja class and put it towards the over $300 a week that after-school care costs through the Adventure Club, and I'm sure that will cost more next year because it's going to be for more hours. The new start time is stated to be 8:00. With the current 9:00 start, Max arrives at school between 8:30 and 8:35. I pulled the letter out last night that we got from the school the beginning of the year. It said it is preferred that children arrive at school by 8:50 so they can prepare for their day, and school breakfast is not even served after 8:50. How many, so next year, that's saying really school starts at 7:45 to 7:50, not 8:00. How many kids are going to be late with the new schedule? How many are going to be rushed off the bus into their classes with no time to get settled? How many are going to miss breakfast at home or miss breakfast at school? If you allow the change to take place, please ask the school not to send me letters home when they're doing PALS testing that ask me to make sure my child gets a good breakfast and gets a good night's sleep because it will be impossible. I guess kids, speaking of that, will be eating lunch at 9:50 to 10:00 o'clock in the morning. You know, they're going to be hungry for another snack by the time they get home before dinner, and to me, that's just promoting, furthering the childhood obesity problem. I respectfully, respectfully ask that you consider other options for this change. As you've heard from other people, it's just been a biased process from the beginning. Please don't rob my son and thousands of other young kids of the sleep and family time that they so need. Thank you.
Next two names will be Karen Myers and Kim Herbert. Christina Lacy is. I'm always reading the next, next two individuals. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina. I am a second grader. I don't like the new start times. My mom works long hours, and I will not be able to see her in the evenings as much as I do now. It is not fair to make me choose between seeing my mom and getting enough sleep. My little sister will not be able to get much sleep as she, as she needs because she will have to get up early to help take me to school. She is grumpy when she does, does not get enough sleep. Both of us sleep late and go to bed late. Less sleep will affect my learning and abilities to focus. Please reconsider the change to help kids like me. Have courage and be kind. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Johanna Hicks, 607 and 1/2 South Franklin Street. It's interesting because I barely had any time to write down the stuff about for this meeting tonight because you, I don't know if it's a fault from the school system or what's going on or the school itself where we don't get enough information about this change, but yeah, we get information about school parties and all kinds of other stuff all the time, right? So anyway, you all sitting up there have the choice to change what you have done, and it is not too late. Now, I'm here to speak for our younger children that don't have a say in on this. First, on safety. There will be dark, cold, early mornings, just like today, and our children will not be, be seen by other cars, trucks, and so forth. Second, sleep deprivation. Since when do younger children need less sleep than teenagers? No studies have been done, have been really done about all of the effects and the causes by other places that have changed these times for the younger, not a lot of them. The third, the third one, the third point that I have on this is family time. Where does that leave us? The fourth one will be the teenager aftercare for our children. We have teenager children that help, that help us with our younger children. That won't be available next year. Like they were all saying, it's, it's going to be a big expense for my family. We cannot afford to have a after daycare for our children. The fifth one on this one is going to cost money to make this change. Why, when our economy and our schools need more teachers, aides, police officers, and the list goes on and on and on. The sixth one, and how are we to tell our young girls and boys that they have to get up so early to catch up, to catch up the bus when their older brothers or sisters get to sleep until later and stay up at night? That was it. Thank you.
Next two names will be Coltrane Monrich and Emily DeBoer Smith.
Ms. Kiran, we are at our 30 minutes.
Okay. Then, before you start, since we are at the end of 30 minutes, board members, do you want to make a motion to extend the public address?
I make a motion that we extend it to hear everyone that signed up.
I second that.
Motion by Ms. Bond and the second by Mr. Lyons.
I would like to see how many folks didn't get a chance to sign up but would like to speak.
Then I can rescind, I can rescind my motion to, we extend the time to let everyone that wants to speak so we can hear that came out this cold night. I'm really interested in hearing what everybody's got to say.
Could you, could you raise your hands and don't move and...
No, no, I'm sorry. I was asking how many were signed up on the...
Oh, we have signed up already 37, and we are at the 13.
I think one of the important pieces of this whole thing is to hear from our committees tonight, which is something that I really want to hear, hear from, and, you know, I, I would like to hear as many people as possible and everyone if possible. I would especially like to, you know, I, I've been to many of these before, and sometimes people decide maybe not to talk if what they were going to say has already been said, so I always appreciate hearing a different perspective, something new, people that have suggestions as the night wears on, so I would, I would just, since we're in discussion, maybe take it one hour at a time or one step at a time. We can always revisit.
So you want to restate your motion, Ms. Bond, that we're going to hear everybody that's signed up and...
She rescinded her motion. You may now entertain a new motion. She rescinded it.
Okay, I'm sorry. May I have another motion then?
I make a motion that we hear everyone who's signed up, and with a show of hands, we hear everyone who raised their hands to speak, and then we end public address.
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Mr. Lyons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Aye.
Okay, so we need to see who still wants to speak.
Would you like to maybe have a piece of paper around it so they can write their names out? Or they can come?
So what are we doing so they know what to do?
So this means I get six minutes, right?
Okay, we're ready.
What are we doing?
Could you, could you, the, the people that raised their hands, could you come forward and sign the piece of paper in front of Ms. Drake, please, so we will have a head count who wants to, address to the board?
Make sure it's people who have not signed up.
If you haven't signed up, please do come sign up.
Okay, they need to do it quietly so we can keep hearing.
Please stay quiet so we can hear. We can go ahead and, Ms. Myers, you can go ahead and address the board.
I would rather wait and hear what she's got to say once everybody's had a seat.
So I was clarifying what number I was. I was number 11. You said we had had 13 speak already, so I wanted to clarify for the boards that they knew how many had actually spoken.
Right. When I said 13, I already called 11 and 12. That's why I was at 13.
But we haven't spoken yet, and that was the question.
Yeah, yeah. You are the 11th person, yes.
I don't mind speaking while they're...
You want to go ahead?
No, I don't mind.
Sure, we're ready to hear.
Yeah, it's all good for me. Okay, I'm Karen Myers. I live at 4902 Mount Tabor Road. I've been here before. My thoughts are many. I have three minutes to express only a few, but let me first assure you that I have over 25 years of experience working directly with children and families, both personally and professionally. Gretchen Disler, Sarah Eyre, Tiffany Bishop, Dawn Wilson, Dana Day, Charlene Travis, Kathy Duncan, Tammy Heft. What do these names mean to you? Recognize any of them? Well, there are so many children in the New River Valley who would recognize them as well as have a personal relationship with each of them. They are just a few of the amazing people on the front lines caring, molding, inspiring, nurturing, and teaching our children. Whether they are a teacher, a custodian, a bus driver, or support staff, they are a primary factor in determining the educational success of my child. 7:15, 12:00, 5:00, 10:30, do any of these times or numbers mean anything to you? Mommy, daddy, sister, brother, grandmother, uncle, neighbor, pastor, what do those mean to you or to a child? To me and my family, it is about relationships with those individuals that set the stage for the public schools to teach our children. It takes a village of people to raise up a child in the way that they should go, and our family should not be penalized because we have an early bird and not a night owl. Seven out of 10, 50%, less than two-thirds, all just numbers that were in someone's study or research. Constantly changing information. How many times have we changed how we teach math? Why do we continue to decrease time for some of our non-SOL subjects? What is the importance of play? How much screen time is too much for a child? How many policies or procedures is this board going to isolate as causes of poor performance and continue to address? When the real issues to address relate directly to how do we recruit and retain the most qualified teachers and support staff? How do we support them financially, physically, mentally, to continue to do what they do every day? We should all be focused on the real needs of our community, not just trying to control something that really is a parenting issue to address, not this board's. Here's my recommendation. Let's stop focusing on silent lunch. You know, the whole gets punished for just a few. We take away the ability for parents to actually parent and make decisions for their own family. We add more mental health stress to our children and families by taking them out of classes, decreasing family time. Mental health of our children should be our primary focus in our world today, and that should begin at home. I recommend educating families on the impacts of sleep, routines, good nutrition, exercise, study habits, et cetera, or their child's ability to learn. I recommend looking more in-depth at the potential impact this change will have on such things as volunteer opportunities for high school students, bus drivers, extracurricular activities. I am extremely concerned about the impact on the infrastructure of quality childcare in the New River Valley. I do not disagree with this board's recognition concerning the importance of sleep on academic performance. I am thankful that we, that you representatives who are attempting to make a positive change to benefit children...
Your time is up, Ms. Myers.
I know, but I waited so patiently, Goonin'. I do disagree with the means that this has occurred. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kim Herbert, and I live at 709 Village Way North in Blacksburg. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service and all that you do for our county and our children. I want to begin by stating that I have never in my life felt compelled to speak before elected officials regarding a policy or an issue. I have never even written a letter to a public official. Why do I feel the need to share this? Because I want you to understand that this issue is too important for me to ignore as it is one that will negatively affect my family and others in our community. I'm not standing before you today with a bunch of research or statistics. It's easy to get caught up in research and forget about the human side of issues. Instead, I want you to hear about my family and to think about other families like mine while I share my thoughts. My son Jack is a first grader at Kipps Elementary. I work full-time as a college professor, and my husband travels two weeks out of the month for his job in sales. My job brought us to Blacksburg a year and a half ago, over five hours away from our families. A major reason I took this job is because the schedule would allow me to be there for Jack before and after school. Therefore, as you can imagine, I was extremely disappointed when I heard of the board's decision... decision to implement the time change. We are now in a position where we are forced to find after-school care for Jack. This increase in expenses also requires me to teach additional classes for extra money, which will create even more time that I will have to spend away from my son. Our evenings are rushed as it is with after-school activities, homework, reading, dinner, baths, et cetera. I worry that placing Jack in after-school care and putting him to bed earlier will take away from quality time that we are able to spend with our son in his formative years. So what do we eliminate? Reading, sports, family dinners? Or do we put him to bed later and risk sending a tired, cranky child to school? As a parent volunteer, I've spent numerous days in my child's classroom. From what I have observed, many children are already tired with the current schedule in place. Tired children tend to turn disruptive, which in turn disrupts the learning process. I shudder to think about what it will be like next year if you do not rethink the board's decision on this time change. If you haven't recently spent time in an elementary classroom, I implore you to do so. Speak to the teachers and administrators and listen to their stories. Pay a visit to the after-school programs and imagine how it will be with double or triple the amount of children. Think about your best childhood memories. Did they involve being in daycare or at home with your family? Our community elected you to represent the interest of all citizens. Please do what's right for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next two names will be Cindy Rosenbaum and Jason Massey.
Coltrane Monrich, I live at three-two-three Newtown Row Road, uh, Charlottesville, Virginia. Basically, I want everybody that stand up that's against this time change, please stand up that's against this time change. And raise your hand if you're standing up. It speaks for yourself. It's, this is the community. This is what they don't want. They won't want this time change. So please listen to your community. That's what you're speaking for, is the community. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Meyer. Emily DeBoer Smith, uh, twenty-nine seventeen Caro Court in Blacksburg. Elementary families are already used to nine AM start times. There are some families, this may help with transitions in the morning, but will cause more to have to seek after-school care and the personal finances are possibly not available for that. My family is one of those. Some families just seek the time in the evenings after work to spend with their children before they have to be sent to bed. Some are single-parent families that have smaller siblings that are caught in the balance of the older sibling's schedule and may not have as readily an opportunity to go to bed at eight PM or earlier. Our younger generation is caught in the crossfire and they have to depend on us to stand up for what is right, even when we stand alone. Sleep deprivation is a societal problem. We are always trying to do as much as physically possible in twenty-four-hour limits that we have. Sometimes that means sleep is the part that has to give. Some suffer from anxiety, depression, insomnia, sleep apnea, all of which make it difficult to get a decent night's rest. Some just work long hours trying to provide for their family, then have to work longer in order to get everything done. Like my husband, he works two jobs. He goes to work at six AM, doesn't get home till eleven or midnight. We don't live in a nine-to-five society. Honestly, it would not be beneficial. No military, police, fire and rescue, nurses, doctors, truck drivers, gas station attendants, and, well, no way to get your Walmart fix at three AM. In that world, maybe sleep would be a more of a priority, but as it is, many people put their sleep on hold every day to provide basic services and securities that are all too often taken for granted. There are so many flaws in the data that was presented to you from the initial committee. There is plenty of research available for the harm that sleep deprivation causes to young minds. It may not directly address school start times because a lot of schools still have their elementary in the later spot due to the concerns we have and will continue to raise. In the six-to-twelve-year range, the biological changes are already taking place to adjust their security and rhythms to that of their secondary counterparts. Some develop that quicker than others. That is dependent on the individual development of each child. They are more susceptible to changes, even small changes, in their environment and quality of sleep that they receive. The same physical ailments your committee blamed on sleep deprivation in adolescents can cause the same for elementary age group. Only if they start in the younger group, they will obviously develop into a long-term problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Cindy Rosenbaum.
Jason Massey, ten oh-eight Caver Street, Blacksburg.
I think first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she has to be first on the list. Sorry about that. You are next, Ms. Massey.
Cindy Rosenbaum, seventeen oh-seven Honeysuckle Drive, Blacksburg. I applaud the board for moving middle and high school start times, but do not support doing so at the expense of elementary school students. I have taught fourth grade for over ten years and I was very proud to be honored as the two thousand fifteen Montgomery County Teacher of the Year by this school board. It is my professional judgment that the earlier start time will be detrimental to my students and my own children. With our elementary students getting less sleep as a result, I know that more will struggle academically. My students often come in tired and many do not get the sleep that they need due to after-school and evening activities. That will get worse when they need to wake up an hour or more earlier. We can say that they just need to go to bed earlier, but I know it will be hard to fit in activities, dinner, showers, and homework. We are very fortunate that our students at Kips have several creative outlets led by Kips staff members before school, including music ensembles, chess club, and running ruse. I fear that these formative enrichment experiences will be lost. Because of other school-related obligations for staff in the afternoons, there will no longer be time to fit these in. As I mentioned, the time change will also affect me as a parent. My sons go to bed at seven-thirty PM. Going to bed any earlier will be difficult and will cut into our time as a family. Currently, the bus comes to pick up my first grader at eight o'clock and his school officially begins at nine o'clock. With the change in start time, he will board the bus around seven o'clock. He currently wakes up at six-fifty AM. This will be a dramatic change. In fact, as of February tw- sorry, two thousand fifteen, the National Sleep Foundation stated that children ages three to five, including kindergarteners, should get ten to thirteen hours of sleep and children ages six to thirteen should get nine to eleven hours of sleep. Earlier start times for our young elementary school children will make these recommendations very difficult to meet. We are trading the problem of sleep-deprived adolescents for that of sleep-deprived children. Finally, a major problem for my students' families and myself is childcare. My own family has been on waiting lists for after-school care at the most desirable centers for several years and we're still waiting. Additionally, my three-year-old attends a daycare that does not open until seven-thirty AM. With the new start times, I will never be able to drop him off myself and I will need to hire a babysitter to take him on the days that my husband cannot, which will cost my family more. My school-aged son will need dramatically more hours of childcare because with our schedules now, we're able to keep our childcare costs to under four hundred dollars per year, but that will skyrocket to eighteen hundred dollars a year with this change, totaling over fifteen thousand dollars for my two sons over their course of elementary school. Again, I am very proud to serve a board that seeks to create the best learning conditions for all of its students. I urge you to reconsider this decision to send elementary school students first, as the decision has far more negative unintended consequences than benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two names will be Harley Stevers and Steve Shockley.
My name is Jason Massey, ten oh-eight Caver Street, Blacksburg, Virginia. That's the second time I said that today.
Thank you.
Like Mr. Shabaka said earlier, uh, it's all been said, it's all, everybody's done said everything that, that I had, I had a paper full, but you can see the room, wow, it's full. Uh, it's, it sounds like to me I need to take my three minutes and thank Dana and Lori and Jenny and Sam for all the, the hard work and the, the nine months of research and, and everything that they've done for y'all to make, uh, make y'all jobs easy for the decision that needs to be made tonight. I mean, they, uh, thank y'all, I just thank you. I mean, I take my three minutes, thank you. Again, it just, uh, they, they made your decision easy for you and I, I just want you to take, take some time this evening and think about it. Uh, we definitely need to maybe reconsider what, what happened. You're all on your board now, uh, you, you can change and that's what needs to happen, change. So, thank you.
And the next name will be Steve Shockley and Rachel Smith.
Hi, my name is Harley Stevers and I live at nine thirty-six Walton Road. Please not, please do not change the time, I have a lot of doctor's appointments. This year's school has been better, I miss a lot less school. Yes, sometimes I stay up late and I wake up at five-thirty. I play sports, maintain As and Bs, so can high schoolers. This morning, the real feel was negative ten degrees. And you want little kids to get up? You should be ashamed if you change it. If your kid was in elementary school, would you want him or her to get up this early? Think about that. Stand in the cold, some without parents. My friend's dad can't take her to the bus stop now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Shockley, I live at seventeen ninety-four Hazel Nut Road in Christiansburg. And I'd just like to speak briefly, uh, to the, uh, aspect of parents. I have two students at Christiansburg High School. Both students are, uh, both of my kids are involved year-round in, uh, extracurricular activities. There's been a lot of, uh, discussion, it's already been, uh, covered tonight about the early, this change of the start times. One of the things I'm concerned with is if we start the high school later in the day, what we're gonna try to get, give them in the morning hours is gonna be taken away in the evening hours. In that, I don't anticipate that our coaches or directors of our extracurricular activities, which it may be academics, uh, performing arts, athletics, I don't expect them to shorten their practice times or their rehearsal times. I wouldn't want them to do that because I feel like that's part of my children's education as well, for them to be able to participate in these activities. With that being said, that's gonna get them home later in the evenings and if they're carrying a heavy class load where they can anticipate one to two hours of homework a night, that's gonna keep them up later. So what we're trying to give them and benefit in the morning is gonna be taken away in the evenings. So we're not really gonna gain anything, we're just gonna move their times up later in the evening. Now, I've pared down my remarks so other speakers would have an opportunity tonight, but I do also think if I had elementary school students right now, I'd be very concerned because just think about last week. Montgomery County Schools went on time last week, I think, as far as I can remember. That would have had, with the new time change, that would have had our pre-K through five, fifth graders at bus stops before daylight. And three days last week, the weather was below thirty-two degrees. I would be very concerned about that if I had some, a child that had to be waiting for the bus in that weather. And that's just something I think that the board needs to consider, it's common sense. Don't put our kids out in that kinda situation. Also, don't set our high schools up to be out later in the evening just so they can get an extra hour in the morning, which they would desperately need if we have them staying an hour later already in their busy schedules. Appreciate the opportunity for the board to listen to us all speak tonight and I think as a community, you recognize that we are concerned with this change and I'm sure that you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Next two names will be Dennis Smith and Corinne Meadows and Tiffany Carroll will follow.
Rachel Smith, forty-nine eleven McCoy Road, Blacksburg. As parents of a special-needs child, my husband and I face a lot of challenges. I'm not confident that any one of you are familiar with what it takes to raise a special-needs child. Challenges include acclimating our child to changes in his schedule. Many special-needs child, children rely heavily on routine. Disrupting his established routine will be challenging. For instance, adjusting to the time change in the spring is particularly difficult for him as an hour of sleep is lost. Having the sleep that he needs allows him to perform at a level that is expected of him. My sister-in-law is a manager of a daycare center and she has shared the importance of younger children getting the much-needed sleep that they need every night. Another challenge is related to getting ready in the mornings. He has not yet developed self-help skills to get ready for the day unassisted. A parent must assist him with this. Another challenge is related to safety. He is incapable of boarding a school bus without assistance from a parent. He, like many young children, does not understand the danger of traffic on the road. While my husband was in the Montgomery County School System in the late eighties and early nineties, the school board changed the start times because of a concern for the safety of elementary school children boarding school buses early in the morning, especially in rural areas when it is still dark outside. This will be an issue again next year. The change in the school start times will prevent a parent in our house from being present in the mornings to care for our special-needs child and ensure that he safely boards the bus when he is in, in middle and high school. You, as a school board, have no right to make decisions that will negatively impact my family. This is irresponsible governing on your part as a board. The only reason that you have provided for this change in school start times is to improve the grades of middle and high school-aged children. I wish you all would look at the whole picture instead of focusing on the interests of a few individuals who will end up profiting from this change. If you really want to ease my mind as a parent, the school system will provide a program for children that provides before and after-school care at no cost to families. Otherwise, this start cha- change will continue to be an issue. I am tired of hearing from people in government office telling me that they know what is best for my family when they have not walked in my shoes, nor have they experienced what I experience on a daily basis with my children. You have created an unwarranted challenge for my family and we will not at rest until this has been addressed. Thank you.
Dennis Smith, forty-nine eleven McCoy Road. Shabaka said he felt the board should be, quote, "very careful" because people had already begun making plans for August twenty sixteen. I am unsure who the people you are referring to are, but you have not spoken to me about my situation with my special-needs child. I'm asking you right now, what am I expected to do with a special-needs child, excuse me, from sixth grade through twelfth, before and after school, while we, his parents, are at work? It is currently not an issue because, it is currently not an issue because there is a before and after-school program at the elementary school that he attends. We are expected to be at work at seven-thirty AM. When he goes to the middle school in a year, what am I supposed to do with my child before and after school? If you all would implement a programs at school that provide before and after-school care, this would not be such a great of an issue. The only alternative that has been told to us is to talk to the local daycare centers, which do not enroll children over the age of twelve. Even if they did, it is going to cost our family a great deal of money that we do not have, nor were we expected to pay for a child of that age. Frogger quote about irresponsible governing. Irresponsible governing is exactly what you are doing right now when you all, as a school board, are ignoring what parents said in the original survey and ignoring what parents have continued to say at the meetings. The majority of parents are against this change of start times and the board is continuing to ignore this. This is irresponsible governing at its best. If you four board members are dead-set that this school's start time change is going to be what is best for our children, I want each of you tonight to stand in front of these people and publicly state that if these children's grades do not improve within one year of this change being implemented, you will voluntarily step down from your seat in office and apologize for implementing this change. This would be responsible governing. Thank you.
Next two speakers will be Tiffany Carroll and Dawson Carroll after Ms. Meadows.
Hi, my name is Corinne Meadows, I live at Maple Drive in Christiansburg and I'm speaking as an individual. I teach special education at Christiansburg Primary School. I have a daughter in elementary school and a son in middle school this year. I'm speaking against the change in start times for several reasons. First of all, as a teacher and somebody that's known to be chatty, I have talked to many people and many faculty members in our school division and I have yet to talk to a single faculty member at elementary or middle and high school level that approves of this start time change. I would think that if you taught at middle and high school level, you'd be very excited, but no, they're not. And secondly, before an excuse is made about people not liking change, we hear that a lot, you know, oh, people just don't like change, um, consider that the problem with this change is that it doesn't make sense. Dragging elementary into it will mess up something that is already working and we have enough problems at our school and at elementary. have enough problems at our school and at elementary schools across the division with attendance already during these early formative years, not to mention kids falling asleep, not paying attention, and all the other problems that go with that. Secondly, the research about adolescence and sleep actually says that teenagers turn on for learning around ten o'clock in the morning. So if you really heed the current research, middle and high school should start at nine thirty, which means that elementary schedules wouldn't have to be affected. That is not going to be a popular suggestion because of work schedules and sports. But what is the priority here? Isn't it supposed to be academic achievement? Maybe the schedule should be just left as is because after all, the school board is getting ready to spend a lot of money just to pay lip service to the actual research, and what's the point of that? Let's spend our money on hiring teachers or something else that will really help school achievement. Thank you.
It is Tiffany Carroll, correct? Is it my next? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Tiffany Carroll, eight fifty Mountain View Drive in Christiansburg. I'm here tonight to address the proposed time change. I do not fear the change. I'm a mother, change happens in my house daily. I, as well as many others, fear the negative impact it will have on the youth in Montgomery County. Once my youngest child graduates high school, I will have twenty-two years, of which my children have been enrolled in Montgomery County Schools. Twenty-two years of which I have lived in Montgomery County and paid taxes. Just in that amount of time, I would have paid, based on our current rate, around thirty or forty thousand dollars in taxes. That is just one household. If this time change takes place, my tax dollars potentially will be spent in another county. What will happen if you are forced to move out of the county to accommodate their schedules based on what is best for their families? I'm not saying hundreds will move, but even if five families have to move, that is a significant amount of money for our county to lose. Furthermore, thinking about families wanting to move out of our county, what is going to happen when they decide to move somewhere else because of the concerns of their children? That is fear, not only mine, but should be for many others. Like several others, I have lived in Montgomery County my whole life. I have been blessed to be able to raise my family here as well, to have their family close to them. My family owned a daycare here in the town of Christiansburg. I know the need of childcare, and I also know the cost. There will be numerous families who will now be forced to use childcare when there is not enough to go around now. The waitlist for most daycares can be upwards of over a year, sometimes longer. Plus, there is the issue of children after sixth grade. There's not much available. They aren't old enough to stay at home by themselves, but they're too old for a lot of daycares. What's going to happen to those children? That is a fear. I am fearful of the economical aspect this will have on all the families that are needing assistance now. I'm sure the number will grow after this takes place. How is the county going to provide for the increase in need? My husband works twelve hours a day, every day, from seven to seven. With this time change, he will no longer be able to be at home with his kids. Has there been any research done about the negative impact about missing family meals or being at a childcare provider for extended amount of time on young children? Parents being involved in their children's lives is extremely important in determining who they will be when they grow up. What is going to happen when you start sending smaller children who haven't seen their families to school? What about the behavioral issues in these children? That is a fear of mine. What is going to happen when these children start checking in to late to school every day? Does this mean families won't be punished because they have to do what is best for them? I, for one, will most certainly be one of those families. And I imagine that most other people in this room will be there, too. What about children who are excelling in school now? What will happen when they decline next year because of lack of sleep or family time, or vice versa? Are you prepared to punish those children because of the decisions that was made out of haste by adults? I will have a middle schooler, an elementary school student, and a preschooler. I have a wide range of kids.
Your time is up, Ms. Carroll.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next is, next is Dawson Carroll. And then after that, Autumn Taylor and Chelsea Myers.
Hello, my name is Dawson Carroll, eight fifty Mountain View Drive. I am here tonight to speak about the time change. I'm eleven years old, and I am in the fifth grade at Christiansburg Elementary School. I do not support this time change for many reasons, starting off with the money and childcare services. I was looking forward to having more responsibilities when I got a little older. But now with the change, it puts responsibilities down. I won't be able to help with my little brother and sister like I've always wanted to do. Just imagine how much money parents will have to spend on childcare services. Since I will be in the sixth grade next year, it will have my brother and sister coming home before me, and that's why the childcare services come in place. My mom works until four thirty, and my dad works until seven thirty. If this time change does happen, that means I won't get to see my dad much, and neither will my brother and sister. I won't get to see them much, both because they will be home before me, and my brother has football practice. My brother loves football. He will have to stop playing because of the time he has to go to practice is at the time he has to go to bed. My little sister is only three, but whenever she goes to the school, it will be dark and hard for her to see what she is doing because we have to cross the road to catch the bus. I worry about little kids being outside that early because anything could happen. I know my life will be changing a lot because I'm going into the middle school, but it is my job to protect my little brother and sister. Our family is close, and not be able to see our dad that much will be very, very hard. The only reason I'm here tonight is because I was taught to use my voice when I feel something is wrong. I am not a grown-up yet, but I still worry about what will happen to not only myself, but to my family and others. I know your job is hard, but my life would be hard if I missed time with my response, with my family and missed the chance to have more responsibilities. Please change your vote because it's ridiculous. Thank you for listening.
Do we have Autumn Taylor? And next one is Chelsea Myers, and then Amelia Foster.
My name is Autumn Taylor, and I live at five eighteen Ellett Road in Blacksburg. So I come to you tonight not with a fancy speech prepared, but just with some of the key points that will affect my family. It seems to me that there was no survey of how many elementary school kids will be impacted and the need of childcare for the children that are being impacted by the earlier start times. With this change, my family will pay over five hundred and forty-four dollars a month for childcare that we do not currently have to pay. Although my husband has rearranged his schedule to accommodate for the current schedule, this would be a significant impact, as my husband is a graduate student and I am a nurse in the, in the area. I spoke with Officer John Goad of the Blacksburg Police Department recently and asked him on what the recommendations are for the county for the age of children that should be left home alone by themselves, and was told that there is no exact law, but that the Department of Social Services recommends that children under the age of thirteen not be left at home unsupervised. But it's based on individual circumstances with your family and how mature you feel that your children are. Currently, of the childcare facilities that are available within the town of Blacksburg, there is a desperate shortage of childcare as it is, as it stands with the current schedule. Of the six childcare facilities that are currently open that accommodate for school-aged children, I found that every single one of them had a waiting list. Some had waiting lists of more than a year. Of all of the ones that had waiting lists, none of them could tell me how many spots could possibly be open for this fall because they have not yet extended the invitation to the current enrolled families, and that information would not be available to me or for me to be able to be placed on any sort of waiting list until at least April from the majority of these daycare centers. One of the daycare centers that I spoke with actually told me that they may be closing. They had a recent change in administration, and currently, as it stands, their doors are not open this week. There's a huge, huge lack of childcare facilities in the area. One childcare facility that has offered to the board to pick up the slack is Adventure Club. I, along with many other parents, have had a very unsatisfactory experience with this childcare facility. I do not believe that they, they give the, the quality of after-school care or before-school care that's recommended and that parents want. That's why three schools in the town of Blacksburg have changed and moved from having Adventure Club inside of their facility to having their own private.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Chelsea Myers, and I live at four nine zero two Mount Tabor Road in Blacksburg. I want to start off by saying I really respect all of you sitting on the board today, and I appreciate the fact that you're taking the time to listen to as many members of the community as you can. I really only have two points that haven't been talked about so far today, one of which is the responsibility of students after they leave high school, going into, you know, college or going into the workforce. Many times, they don't have the option to choose to sleep until later. There are many of my college courses, I had a forty-five-minute commute, so I was getting up at six thirty to be able to leave to get to my college courses on time. And that's just a factor that they're, that they're going to have to live with when they leave high school. And if we're almost regressing them instead of preparing them for college, I just feel like that's a detriment to our students. I successfully navigated the Blacksburg School System with the current start times and was also an older sibling that got my ten-year minor sister off the bus every day. And that was a system that worked very well for my family. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is, and this is a personal honest moment for me, when you tell me I have an hour later to sleep in the morning, I stay up an hour later. And that's just something that I think should be considered, that just really hasn't been brought up, so it's something I would like to bring to your attention. The other thing is, you guys have heard a lot. There have been a lot of school board meetings. Tonight, you've heard a lot. You're going to hear more, and that takes a lot of your time. But the, the word "hear" is what I want to bring up there. You've heard a lot. I had the privilege to work with children for the past three months, and something we tell them a lot, elementary school-aged children, is, "I know you can hear me, but please put on your listening ears." So I would like to ask the school board, "I know you can hear us. The community is here, and we would appreciate it if you'd put on your listening ears." Thank you.
Next, next two names will be Susan Branches and Susan Miller.
Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Amelia Foster, and I live at eight eighty George Edward V. Christiansburg. I am one hundred, one hundred percent against this time change for several reasons. But the main reason is for the safety of our younger children. As you know, they will be in the dark waiting on the buses. From six thirty to seven thirty AM is when the traffic is the heaviest from people going to work. Also, at seven AM is when the police departments are changing shifts. Therefore, there will, they will be unable to patrol the streets. So not only do you have the younger children out in the dark and the cold, they're out there when the residential streets are the busiest times in the morning, and the police cannot patrol the streets. Another safety concern is for the younger children being home in the evenings by themselves for more than one hour because some families will not have extra money to pay for daycare. I'm quite sure they don't want to do this, but you leave them no other choice. It's hard for me to believe that anyone would vote to put these children in such danger. There was a survey that came out about childcare last week, last week. My daughter brought home a survey about childcare and the time change. This leads me to believe that the parents have been misled since you claimed to have done all the research and the surveys concerning this time change. When our teenagers go to college or get a job, their professor is not going to say, "You need an extra hour of sleep." They will have to be at their class or their job, even if it starts at seven AM. This is called responsibility, and that is what we should be teaching our children. One board member commented that it wouldn't look good to change it back once we have made our decision. But I was taught it's okay to admit when you have made a mistake. I urge you to see that this change is not what's best for the students of Montgomery County. I urge you to listen to the parents, the same parents that elected you, believing you would listen to us and do the right thing. I urge you to look more into this matter, and if anything, if anything, delay this one more year until you have researched everything. And I'll leave you with one question. Are you prepared to answer to a parent whose child has been hurt because of this time change? I think not. Thank you.
After Susan Miller will be Heidi Dalton and Sam Smith.
Hello, I'm Susan Branches. I live at four oh five First Street, Christiansburg, and my daughter goes to Christiansburg Primary. Dr. Myers, board members, please rethink the time change. The availability of childcare concerns our group a great deal. This plan will cause an overburden of an already taxed system. DSS has reported a waiting list for help already with no financial assistance being available. Many daycare centers are at capacity, and children are put on waiting lists. Waiting lists do not ensure replacement at any time. There is also no accurate count of how many children need care for additional hours. That research has never been done. Several childcare centers are not licensed, so if a family is using DSS payments to provide for their childcare, those facilities may not honor the payment. That sort of example takes place where some of our most financially crippled families are situated. There are many families in our county who are struggling just to put food on the table and have an extra burden is more than they can bear or make adjustments for. Otherwise, service projects like Micah's Backpack and Backpacks for Love would not exist. The glaring fact that the owner of a prominent childcare center who provides childcare for MCPS families was on that initial researching committee is a huge conflict of interest that should have been considered. Her involvement to this level breaches the trust of your constituents and raises flags as to the validity of the process. There is no minimum age in Virginia for a child to be left alone. Some towns have ordinance that stay age thirteen. So it's up to parental, parental discretion to evaluate the maturity of the child and conditions surrounding their time alone. How long conditions of the house, if cooking is necessary, et cetera, which is vague at best. This law will not protect a desperate parent who is forced to rage, raise a latchkey kid. The creation of latchkey children increased the chance of an emergency happening to a child alone. They increase the chance of abduction and create an utter separation in a child's life. Some parents may take this choice because they have no other options. That will be fine until something has happened. Then changes will be possible for neglect, an endangerment that has been potential to happen. Also, going back to where I volunteered at school, there's just so many kids that you have to wake them up to get out of the car. I mean, it's, it's not going to get any better. It's just going to get worse. I had a parent last week, I had to wake her up just to get her to move so a, a teacher could find a parking spot. And that's just going to increase. So please rethink it. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, and members of the board. My name is Susan Miller, and I live on the Mud Pike Road in Christiansburg. And I did give a copy of my comments to the table over there. Retired in two thousand and twelve after forty-five years in public education, curriculum supervision, and as a college professor. I have two grown children who, thanks to Montgomery County Public Schools, and specifically Bethel Elementary and Auburn Middle and High School, are very successful professional people. I also have two grandchildren who will be attending the Auburn Strand in the near future. My concerns for tonight regard my experiences in education, research, and also as a grandparent. I have read with interest the comments of all, of all regarding the change in beginning times for schools, and I would like for you to consider the following questions prior to your making a decision about the announced time change. What percentage of the studies reviewed or those conducted were in a rural setting with sixty-minute bus rides within attendance zones? Were all of the studies in the Were all of the studies in the metropolitan areas where students lived a short distance from schools? How many of the studies looked at the length of driveways that students would have to maneuver? Ours is a half a mile long through a pasture with cows. Daylight or dark, it's difficult. How many of the studies knew that approximately four hundred and fifty miles of unpaid road existed in Montgomery County? How many of the studies were completed in communities on the eastern shore or close to the eastern shore as daylight comes earlier there and we are in the same time zone? Consider that Virginia is an eleven-hour drive from east to west, and five forty-five AM is darker here than it is in Virginia Beach. Has any consideration been given to the athletes at all of the high schools who will miss at least two blocks or at least three blocks or academic periods in order to travel to athletic events? Athletes now cover more of the school day from seven-fifty to noon than an athlete in the future who will start school at, I assume, nine o'clock or nine-twenty until noon in the coming year. I realize that athletic concerns are not at the top of the list, but have you thought about the impact of losing that much academic time in order to represent a school? Did anyone look at the distances that athletes had to travel to get to their particular athletic contests? All of the schools, particularly Auburn and Eastern Montgomery High School, travel much farther to reach opponents and will have to leave early in the day unless times are drastically changed. I think all of my questions need to be reviewed before you have made your decisions. Please reconsider. Please look at the research tailored to our population and to our topography. The earliest pickup time now at Auburn Middle and High School is six-oh-eight AM. Blacksburg Middle School and High School is six-twenty-nine. Christiansburg Middle and High School is six-thirty-two. Eastmont and East High, Eastmont and Shawville Middle School are six-thirty-seven AM. Does that mean my grandson will be out on the road waiting for a bus at the end of a half, a half-mile driveway at five forty-five in the morning? Thank you.
After, after Sam Smith, we have Ray Plout and Mallory Rhodes.
Hello, my name is Heidi Dalton. I live at 396 Walton Road. I have a daughter who goes to Bellevue. My first concern is she has tutoring every morning. She has to be there at five minutes till seven, and I don't think with the school change and the time change that they are going to continue to have the morning tutoring. She has went from a C to an A in reading for this help, and I would like to continue for them to do that in the morning. And my second is, like the lady had said earlier about her son having aninja class, my daughter plays soccer for Christiansburg Rec, and I would hate to tell my daughter that you no longer want to go to James Madison on a scholarship for soccer because you changed the schedule and she will not be able to have practice. Thank you.
Uh, Sam Smith, live at 233 Lester Place, Christiansburg. Transportation also creates a big question for us, you know, computer simulations are fine, but, you know, will the bus routes actually be completed on time when actually ran? You know, Auburn Elementary currently has several bus routes that take over fifty minutes long, which creates a big question mark for the plan to successfully achieve this task. If there are ways to modify the current bus system for optimum performance, then why isn't that being done now to maximize the current bus schedule? It is suggested several times by staff that students utilize buddy systems, have neighborhood parent coordination, uh, you know, communities to help each other at the bus stop, but it is forgotten that Montgomery County is covering three hundred and eighty-eight square miles. There are many, many bus stops that are in the middle of nowhere where there are no community, neighbors, or buddy to be with, just long, dark, winding roads with people who are potentially driving way too fast or way too tired, or long driveways that increase the chance of a child being picked up by a child predator. The current schedule allows for the majority of the students to be picked up by the bus prior to the three law enforcement agency shift changes at seven AM until seven fifteen, where there are no circulating police officers, but your new plan puts our smallest children on the road with that scenario with no police and no patrol. If their shifts are altered to accommodate for this gap, this impacts more people in our community. Uh, you know, our group has found more great consistencies in the community's process. Uh, that's been acknowledged by the members of the current board. Uh, the surveys that were given accounted for thirty-one percent of secondary parents, thirty-three percent of elementary parents, and seventy-three percent of secondary students because they were directed to do them at their school. Many parents reported not even knowing that the survey even existed, existed, nor were they allowed to fill out any survey for their student, but only that the student it would affect the most. The surveys asked limited, biased questions. Considering the basis of the resolution was to flip the elementary start times, we guess that should not have been a surprise. The communication to families in the community has been minimal. There are still people wondering if this is happening. The transparency of the committees and process has been in question. No individual studies were done on our system to find the accurate impact this change will have. It is being seen as cost prohibitive, so we used other school systems' research. None of that compared directly to our accounting size or socioeconomic challenges, but we used them anyway because we would not or could not spend the money to do a better job. While the base research of this change is pretty well-known at this point, the direct correlation of the effects that this flip has on our system have to be considered. Thank you.
Mr. Ray Plout? And then after, Mallory Rhodes and Heather Smith.
I am Dr. Ray Plout, 620 Watson Lane, Blacksburg, Virginia. I have two points I'd like to make quickly. First, my children went to Montgomery County schools. They had no trouble at all with the start times because they went to bed early enough. And the second point, I am a full-time volunteer at Gilbert Lincoln Elementary School. Every year, some of the children walk to school without an adult. I think it would be much more dangerous for them to walk to school in the dark than for a sixteen-year-old to drive to school in the dark. I am in favor of the present times or the compromise proposal of the parents who want to be heard that has been given to you. Thank you.
Mallory Rhodes, Heather Smith, and Crystal Ventress.
Um, my name is Erin Rhodes. This is my sister, Mallory Rhodes. Um, we live in Cullen Court.
You're going to come to the microphone a little closer so we can hear better?
Okay. I go to Christiansburg High School. She goes to Christiansburg Middle School. Um, we disagree with the change. Because I'm involved in a sport, practices would be pushed back a lot later, making it harder to balance school, practice, and homework after. After-school care prices will increase, and, uh, the waiting list will get significantly longer. I have a younger brother, and I like to be at home when he gets home, so he's not home alone. He's in third grade, and, um, yeah. Part-time jobs will be more difficult, uh, to find and to keep because, uh, we get out so late, and it would just be harder to balance those as well. Your turn.
Um, we'll stay up later if you change it.
Um, also, I don't feel like it would prepare me for morning classes, uh, in college or, uh, for when I get a job, because I won't be able to control when I have to wake up. And, uh, you know, it'd just be harder to wake up earlier when I've been going to bed. Wait, so, all right, is that all?
Yeah, I think so.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Heather Smith, and I reside on Mud Pike Road in Christiansburg. And I come for the board this evening and the members of the commi, in the members of the community, not only as a parent of a second grader at CPS and a middle school student at CMS, but I'm also a recent graduate of Radford University with a master's in education. Over the past year, I've had the privilege and the responsibility to teach both in the second and a fifth grade classroom. It's before you that I come, not only for my own students, but for those that I've had the privilege to teach. I also currently teach as an SWL tutor at a nearby elementary school. It is the safety that concerns me the most. I'm not okay with elementary-age students standing out in the dark waiting for the bus. As I go to, as I drive to work in the morning, I have seen elementary students walking to nearby bus stops, often not accompanied by an adult. It also concerns me that my middle school student, although she is a wonderful student and is very responsible currently, there's adults at home when she gets on the bus early in the morning. With the proposed plan to change, she will be left at home alone to get on the bus. I'm not okay for her to walk down an extremely long driveway, to stand out on a busy road for anybody and anybody to notice that she's standing alone, that there's no adults around. As I stand before you, yes, I am petrified, but I cannot stand idly by as these decisions are made that concern me, the safety of our students. I'm not willing, although some students may need a little more sleep. The case is not my house. My oldest is early to rise and early to bed. My youngest, not so much. I'm not okay with this change. It concerns me that we are robbing Peter to pay Paul, that we are doing this at the expense of our youngest students. I implore you, please, it's not too late. I'm okay with the plans that I've made for 2016 for you to say, "You know what? It's okay, we can stop here." Thank you.
After Ms. Ventress, it will be Kenya Reynold and Farkey Mullens.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, I'm Crystal Ventress. I'm at Ridge Road, Christiansburg. I'm speaking as, as an individual. Based on the Montgomery County survey, um, it seems to me that the majority of staff, parents, and students don't want or are not in favor of the time change. Dr. Kazner shared that our county is performing above state average on standardized tests. With current scheduling, it seems that our county already demonstrates success. The time change, the time change is like we're willing to risk our community's foundation being our elementary school students for the betterment of having a stronger roof being our older students. A better roof seems quite pointless if our foundation is weak. We should not put the burden of our society on our youngest population of children. Thank you.
Kenya Reynold? And Farkey Mullens. After that, Deborah Smith.
Hi, my name is Kamai. I live at 2721 Violet Lane in Christiansburg. The time will affect me because I watch my younger siblings. They are too, they are too young, too, too young to stay by themselves. If you give me an extra hour, I'll just use it in sleeping. I would just use it to stay up later. Please keep the time the change, time the same. Thank you.
Farley Mullens? Then Deborah Smith.
Members of the board, I'm Deborah Smith. I live at 2557 Mash Run Road, Blacksburg. Ms. Graham, I emailed you back in May. I appreciate your response back to that. First, I would say thank you for the delay or the notification last night for the delay today, so we wouldn't be waiting till this morning. I have a little bit of a different, um, outlook. I know a couple people had, um, spoke about this, forgive me, even though some people would say I like to talk, but not in front of large groups. My daughter graduated from Blacksburg High School last year. She was a AB student. Um, she, um, or actually was an A student, had National Honor Society, ASL. She worked at her school. She came home. She did her devotion in her Bible. She would often go to bed at eleven o'clock, got up at six AM, went to school, did her work. But I ask you, why do we send our children to school? To prepare, to prepare for their future. They go to college, and what time do they start college classes? I'm sorry, but not at nine AM. What time do you start your job? I dare say, you know, not at nine, ten, whatever. I work at a hospital locally. Some days a week, my day starts at five forty-five. I know not a lot of people here start that early on their job, but we are preparing our children for their future. And as graduation services and ceremonies took place last year, I heard a lot of, "We are preparing you for the real world, and that's why we are sending our children to school for the real world." And I ask that you will take that into consideration and think about what you're doing. Yes, our children, we're thinking about our, um, elementary schedules, but it's the real world that they are going to be in one day. So I ask that you'll look at that and think about the time change and, and, you know, just see what, you know, your real world is, and ask that you'll relook at this. Thank you.
I have Omar McRanals and Annie Hesp, and then Crystal Mooney.
Hello, good evening. Um, I had to raise my hand to speak just a little bit, uh, just to tell you myself, I live in Blacksburg on Orange Lane, and I have recently raised two children who, uh, my son is now a junior, no, excuse me, a sophomore in college. He and my daughter both survived going to school at the current time change. I survived going to school at the current time that it is now, and we were fine. Um, my children have gone on to lead successful lives. I've gone on to lead a successful life. However, I am now raising two of my nieces. I do not receive support to raise my nieces, but they are in elementary school, and I'm not sure where someone came up with the idea of sending home elementary school children ages thirteen and under at two-thirty in the afternoon. There is, to me, very few parents out there who would not need childcare. So in order to accommodate the already strained relationship I am under with finances because I have taken on two additional children to raise, personally, I would need to find funds somewhere in my budget. I'm not sure if you all could help perhaps with that, um, as you might need to other parents, but I don't have money to pay for daycare every day after school. My husband has adjusted his work schedule in order to meet the bus when it comes at four o'clock. He teaches college students at eight o'clock in the morning. So in order to accommodate those same students that you want to give extra time to, he'd have to, he is turning around and teaching those same students one year later when they graduate at the same time. So to me, it's a complete paradox, um, how this would work. Um, I do not have funds to pay for daycare every day. We accommodate our family the best we can. Those teens and, um, young adults have to get up and go to jobs. They have to get up and go to college classes, and they do not cater to the schedule of waking up whenever they choose. And, um, being a, for a social worker for the past fifteen-plus years of my life, I have full confidence that you will see an increase in Montgomery County of children complaints of neglect and inadequate supervision. I've had to investigate those kinds of complaints myself in my career as a Child Protective Services worker, and you will have it because families like myself will not have the funds to pay for after-school daycare. Thank you.
Annie, Annie Hesp? And Crystal Mooney and Rebecca Beasley.
Hello there. First of all, thank you very much for your time and giving back to the community, because I know you have to sit here and listen to this for, it's, we're going on now two hours, and it's, and you've been hearing about this for several years, but there's some things I want to talk about here, and I've always kind of sat out on the side because I never thought we were going to come to this. Intellectually, I'm a fan of unattended consequences, and I think one thing about unattended consequences is you've brought us together as a community. And I think when we look out here, um, I've never seen so many people actively come to us. And I think when we look out here, I've never seen so many people actively come together about one issue so strongly, and I think that's fascinating. And I think part of the reason that we've all come together is because this has become a zero-sum game for us, which means that high school potentially wins and we lose. Nobody seems to have brought anything to us that makes this a better situation for us, for elementary students, parents, and the community. And I think that's part of the reason maybe why this is, is driving us here altogether. And one thing that's really important that is not really being addressed either in research or hasn't really been said, because I don't want to repeat what everybody else has been saying, is equality of life. Right? Everybody here has talked about what is going to be lost for us is the time we spend with our children, getting our children to school, being able to spend time with our children. Right? And this is what I think really needs to be said and really needs to be deliberated about before we make any changes. One thing I think that also concerns us as a group that I want to just be very specific about is that this hasn't been transparent. We don't feel like it's been transparent. Perhaps it has to you, but to us, it hasn't. And so when it's a zero-sum game, that's concerning. Right? And some issues that haven't been transparent, perhaps to us and at least to me, is that, for example, the survey, right? Some of us got the survey, not all of us got the survey. The survey, first of all, was very poorly written in the way it was written. I want to be very clear about this. Right? I have a PhD in qualitative and quantitative research, and you look at these questions and they were not clear as if this was a given, if this was a hypothetical, and equally in the way it was interpreted was just as weak. Right? Because they really interpreted it the way they wanted to. It fell to many parents, I think, is that the way that those surveys were interpreted were ways that they already had considered to have a final decision. Right? And I think when you go back and look at issues of, is your child getting enough sleep? Is your child happy with the current system? The way that that was understood, I don't think parents who answered it one way or the other understood what was at stake when they answered that survey. And I think that should be at least reconsidered. Let's see, oh my gosh. And lastly, I just want, I'm going to sum up to one second, is quality of life. And what did I have down here?
Sorry, your time is up.
That's okay. So I just want to think of quality of life and what you are offering the people who've come here this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Crystal Mooney, Rebecca Beasley, and Elizabeth Ward.
Hi, I'm Crystal Mooney, and I reside at 1230 Flint Drive. I'm sorry, but I can't help to think that we're boring you here. We see you holding your face up, looking at the clock, blinking your eyes open. Come on, guys. We're narrowing down our speeches to three minutes, and just like you all, we're tired. Let's show a little bit of mutual respect here. Hopefully that opening caught your guys' attention. I'm not sure if you all have had to use government assistance before, but I have. I've been a single mother, and I've worked very hard to provide for my children and to shape a better future for us. I've had to show my kids that with hard work, honesty, and good morals, you can shape your future. Years later, as a sole proprietor, my business, my livelihood, depend on nothing other than the physical services that I provide in my business, in my shop. The busiest hours are essentially evenings and weekends. In an attempt of balancing both worlds of family and work, I have reduced my business hours to accommodate my children's home, educational, and extracurricular needs. This decision has already influenced a financial decrease in daily profit. Changing the school tart, changing the school's start times would create an even greater strain for my business and my family. Due to my business hours, having my younger children get out of school earlier creates more time in the evenings that they are home without me, or even shorter business operation hours, creating a greater financial strain. This time change may seem like just another task that needs to be addressed among your guys' busy days. This meeting may seem like something else you just need to do to save your name. But to myself and the family surrounding me, this meeting is the very last moment of hope for our families to have successful, to successfully raise our children the way they need to be raised. How should we raise our children? Let that decision be up to us parents, not the after-school programs, not the added stress of trying to make ends meet, and certainly not the contradicting studies we are surrounding our children with. Let's leave the politics at the door. Let's start utilizing integrity, empathy, honesty, and most importantly, as you seemed tonight, unity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Beasley. I live at 525 Cameron Drive, Christiansburg. I didn't prepare a speech. I didn't know I was even going to speak until I came tonight, but I am a grandmother that is raising a kindergartner. I am like most other parents in this community, as well as nationwide, that everyone works. I work full-time. By the time I pick my granddaughter up from daycare, get home, do supper, bath, homework, et cetera, it's a struggle to get her in the bed now at a decent time. I can't imagine trying to get her in bed an hour earlier. I just would really like for you guys to reconsider this, and as everyone that has shown up here, I was so glad when I showed her up here with all the support. I think you guys really should reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. After Elizabeth Ward, we have Sandra Royal and Elena Arnold.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Ward. I live at 1691 York Drive, and I'm currently a high school student at Christiansburg High. I am a member of the marching band, and I have a part-time job, and I'm also a member of the Christiansburg High School English Mac team. That alone takes up 90% of my time, not to mention the homework that I also have to do for my advanced classes to maintain my straight A honor roll. Given the time change, I will have less ability to perform what I accomplish now, and it'd make me end up staying up later and having a less chance of spending what little time I can with my parents before I go off to college. So I please ask you guys to reconsider having the, switching the time changes and for the betterment of everyone here and everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 155 Cedar Bluff Drive in Christiansburg, and I think I'm the last person.
There should be Sandra Royal before you.
Oh, well, sorry. Sorry.
Good evening. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight either, but I thought I would just be another voice because so many people came out in the cold weather, waited so long to address this issue. Everything that I'm concerned about has been discussed. I just wanted to be one more person. I don't think that this group is actually an accurate representation of how many people are against this time change. I think there would be more people here if they felt this wasn't a done deal. Some people think that it was a done deal, so they just didn't come. A lot of issues about safety of elementary school children, that's my concern as well. Sports, my husband is a coach. He's also expressed the issue of athletes getting home later. Like someone said earlier, what you're taking away in the, in the morning, what you think you're giving them in the morning, you're losing in the evenings. The financial aspect of after-school care, to me, I'll do that. I'll find a friend, I'll find daycare, but my younger son wants to be with his sibling for those two hours. He doesn't want to be in daycare. So that would be upsetting for them to be apart in the evening when the older child helps the younger child with the homework, and I just wanted to be another voice, and I think there are a lot of other voices that aren't even in this room. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm back. I'm at 155 Cedar Bluff Drive in Christiansburg, and I know that everybody prepared speeches, but I thought I would finish the night with a song. [music] The sun's not up in the county just yet, but there's something that you see. There are babies at the bus stop. Too early, how can it be? UK did a study on who change will impact. Wouldn't guess a bit, middle class in fact. Middle class drops not on free lunch. We will see their performance drop a bunch. For our absence, they will be bad, tired and bent. You don't know, you don't know how this will hurt small students. There's not more, there's not more on why this change is brewing. We don't care about all students. That's where it's at. The kids will thank us one day. It's funny how some studies are good ideas at first, but then more research will change it. Then the sun is worse. It's time to see what you can do to help all the students get through high school, middle, elementary, primary. They won't say, they won't say that secondhand smoke wasn't bound. They found out, they found out more cancers could be helped. Don't be fooled, there's more to learn. Don't make a change now. Preliminary studies don't look good for us. No kindergarten should be out and don't wait in for months. Their safety matters most, we have to take a stand. We have to compromise, their lives are in our hands. Don't you be, don't you be another ignorant county. Please don't say, please don't say we made a bad world scene. Hey, I'm saying with all I can say, let the fire rage out. Board never bothered me anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. With that final cheerful tune, our public address is closed. Thank you all for coming out, and it's been very powerful, and it was important for us to hear all important parts of the community and what is wanted, and thank you for all attending. The next agenda item is consent items. If there's nothing to be pulled from consent agenda, we'll consider the consent items approved. Is there any discussion regarding the agenda? I would like to thank the Southwest Tools Supply for donating $27,566 worth of tools and supplies to the machine shop at Christiansburg High School. Our consent agenda approved. The next item on the agenda is personnel reports. Do I have a motion to adopt personnel reports?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyons moved, Ms. Graham seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is payment of the bills. May I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyons and Ms. Bond, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Payment of the bills. Approved. The next one is financial summary report. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial summary report?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyons and Ms. Graham, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Financial summary report is approved. The next item is on the agenda, superintendent's reports, recommendation, and announcements. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Karan. Annually, the Montgomery County School Board asks employee groups to present their recommendations regarding the superintendent's proposed operating budget. We have several employee groups represented tonight that would like to share information with you. We'll first start with Lori Walls for the administrative assistants.
Good evening. My name is Lori Walls. I'm an administrative assistant in Montgomery County. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the administrative assistance salary scale. In 2008, we were one of the next employee groups set to have our salary scales fixed. Unfortunately for everyone, the bottom fell out of the economy, and we are still waiting for that adjustment. Since 2008, our job responsibilities have increased. Each school now has a new security system requiring continuous monitoring of doors and assisting visitors with scanning proper ID and signing them in using the visitor management system. Many of us have new technology expectations, including Munis, Power School, ERO, Omega, Moodle, Board Docs, payroll and leave entry, as well as all Microsoft applications, Google Docs, and for some, web page management. For administrative assistants on the elementary level, they continue to perform significant bookkeeping duties, including payroll and entry/leave, but remain on Level 1 salary scale. Evergreen Solutions recently did a compensation study, and it looks promising as a whole. We are in full support of the implementation of the study if we pick up where we left off in 2008. We are asking for a 12% increase to fix our scale. Recent years have shown we are not able to compete with other school systems, Virginia Tech, or even Montgomery County. We are losing valuable employees. Those of us here stay because we love what we do. Please consider our request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walls.
Thank you, Ms. Walls. Next is Justin Lucas for the shops and facilities.
Hello, my name is Justin Lucas, and thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and represent the maintenance department today. Let me first of all thank you guys for the support you showed us through the years, both individually with salary and benefits that you provided, and also collectively as maintenance department by funding our needs and allowing us to have the tools and supplies that we need to get our job done. We have a good maintenance department. We have a good group of people that work there. I began thinking about some things that the maintenance department often doesn't get noticed for. Preventative maintenance programs, looking into the future and finding things that may break or cause safety issues or problems in the future and repairing those before it becomes an issue, before it becomes a problem, saving money that way, and also saving people from being injured and other things. I began to think about Friday, we got snow coming, everybody knows. Most people get to stay at home, a code four is called, but maintenance employees are in here removing the snow to be sure that when the roads are reopened, the schools will be ready so that the children can return to school and return their normal functions. I began thinking about other things, different projects we did. I thought about the remodel of the Christiansburg High School Culinary Arts classroom this summer, and the maintenance department took that on. We worked with Rick Weaver. We worked with people within the custodial department there, and we really worked together to accomplish this task, to do it with the money that was allocated, and we saw a good group of people get in there with lots of knowledge and lots of skill and get the job done. But really, what that got me thinking about is how everybody is tied together in one way or another. There is no person who's on an island, and everyone who is affected by something, it affects someone else, which got me thinking, in these regards, teachers depend on maintenance and maintenance teachers and custodial staff and administrative assistants and... and custodial staff and administrative assistants and cafeteria staff. All facets work together and are affected by what happens to another. Which really got me thinking like this. As I begin to consider what made an impact upon my life, it's not the buildings. It's not computers and equipment. All those things are great. All those things are good. But what makes a difference in the life of a child is a person. And if you want to invest in the life of children, the best way to do that is by investing in the people who have an impact upon their lives every day. And what we're asking for is that you guys continue to invest in the lives of us employees selfishly so I can give that to my children and my family. But realistically, because I believe that's the best way to impact the future of our children. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Next is Matthew Gogler for the custodians.
Hello, my name is Matthew Gogler. I'm the day shift custodian at Kipps Elementary School. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you. And, you know, I thank you for your support that you've given our department over the years. And this is the best job I've ever had. You're not going to find a better job than what I have. We might not make a lot of money in our department, you know, our job goes unnoticed. But nobody realizes what you do until you stop doing it. You know, we have a hard job. And we appreciate the support that you do give us. We appreciate the vacation days and the personal leave and the sick days and the insurance. These are blessings to me and my family. They mean a lot to me. And I know they mean a lot to all the custodians. But I wanted to start out by reading a passage from a book. And it reads this, it says, "The eye cannot say unto the hand, 'I have no need of you,' or again the head to the feet, 'I have no need of you.'" We all have need of each other. We might be at the bottom of the totem pole, but we do a lot for the county. We're the backbone of the county. We're more than just custodians. We're servants of our community. We help keep our children healthy and safe. We clear the snow off of the sidewalks. We help conserve energy by making sure lights are turned off when not in use. We monitor the heating and air systems. We fix things, saving time and money. You know, having the maintenance having to come out and fix something, or we can just fix something small ourselves. That saves money. We come in on our days off for events and for burglar alarms and to do extra cleaning. We're essential personnel now, now that our code fours have been taken away from us. What we do is important, and we want fair market value for our dedication. We've lost some things over the years concerning healthcare and incentives. We now have responsibility to pay above our co-pay. We're paying a deductible for our medications. We want fair market value concerning our salaries. It's extremely difficult to support a family on less than $2,000 a month. Can any of y'all do that? I'm sure you make a lot more than I do, you know, and I have a wife and I have a daughter at home that look up to me, and I want to provide the very best for them. And it's hard, especially in this time of inflation. We appreciate what we do have. We appreciate the time off and the benefits. We really do. They're blessings to us. But we need more. We need salary increases. We need what the fair market says we deserve. We desperately need upgrades concerning our equipment. We want to do a better job in the schools. It makes us proud when people walk into our schools and they say, "Wow, this school looks beautiful." It makes us proud to do that kind of work, and we want the best equipment. Some of our smaller schools, they struggle because, you know, they don't have the kind of help that they need. If they're out a couple people that are sick, you know, it hurts us. It hurts the way the school looks. And we want to make our schools look the very best. So, yeah, we could use some extra help in our smaller schools. We know you care. We know you do. Because some of you reached out when we lost one of our own this year in David Allen. And David Allen was in a wheelchair, and he came to work every day because he cared. And I know y'all care, and I'm asking for you to care for our department once again and give us the support that we need because we all need each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gogler. Next is Judy Altizer and Sophia Mitkoff for the gifted advisory committee.
Hello, my name is Judy Altizer, and my daughter Zoe is a student at Auburn Middle School. I'm a member of the gifted advisory committee that is comprised of K-12 parents of gifted children from all strands in the county. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the gifted department we are fortunate to have in Montgomery County and bring to you our 2016-17 budget request. The GAC works to support the gifted staff at MCPS in their commitment to rigorous and innovative and structural programs designed to meet the needs of all students and their various learning styles. The gifted resource teachers recognize individual students' needs and develop each of them to their full potential to be lifelong learners and productive global citizens. The Montgomery County K-12 gifted students have continued to be served by the gifted resource teachers with accomplishments in many areas. To highlight, students were exposed to the art of filmmaking by producing films to showcase their learning, improve business and logic skills through stock market simulation, and continue to be involved in STEM learning such as robotics. The majority of the accomplishments are listed in the 2014-15 report of the gifted advisory committee included in your packet. There are some additional highlights provided in a handout for you.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Mitkoff, and I'm currently the president of the gifted advisory committee. Excuse my voice, I got cold. In, I believe, 2011, as a result of the budget cut, we lost two and a half teachers, the GRTs. And our number of students has not gone down, but there has been a loss in the instructional intensity afforded to our students. We have GRTs who have a student load of up to 250, and that's for one GRT. And all of our GRTs are spreading across multiple schools. And our other consequences of this reduced staffing, you can read them. I mean, you can certainly imagine when the workload is not reduced, but the people who are doing the job, the number of them reduced, what are the consequences? It's lost the time to communicate with, to observe the students and to communicate with the parents, and of course, to communicate with each other. In this past November, the GAC sponsored an evening of roundtable discussion with the Montgomery County Gifted Resource Teachers for parents of gifted students. As you see from the most repeated quotes, the parents would like more information and time with the GRTs for themselves and their students. For gifted students, I think they need more observations and time even more so. There are people thinking that gifted students are good at taking care of themselves. They don't need the extra resources. I think that's a big misunderstanding. Because each child is gifted in different ways. To maximize their potential, we actually need to spend more time with them. And we need to spend more time with their parents as well. And for that reason, as we've requested for the last four years, we would like those two and a half GRTs to come back to work with us. There is no good study where I can find what is the good ratio between gifted students and the teacher's ratio. But I think you can understand, 120 to 1 is not a good ratio for any teacher-student ratio number. So with that in mind, we're not asking you to do extraordinary things. We're just saying, please give us back those two and a half teachers that we lost four years ago that we have been asking every year since. I've seen some new faces here, the new superintendent, the new school board members. There is a Chinese saying, "Xing guan shang ren san ba huo." Roughly translating is, when the new people coming to town, they tend to set fire, meaning they stir things up. I'm not asking you to set fire. Just give us the two and a half teachers back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Next is Kelly Hager for the nurses. Kelly?
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hager. I am a school nurse, and I love my job. I've had the privilege of serving Montgomery County for the past 12 years. During this time, we've transitioned from seven RNs working 20-hour weeks to 20 RNs working over 32 hours per week. This year, for the very first time, we've been offered health insurance. We want to thank you for these positive changes, which have greatly benefited both the students and the staff in every school. During the same 12 years, I have witnessed increasing numbers of students with special health needs, chronic illnesses, and life-threatening allergies, as well as those who are emotionally fragile and economically at risk. Healthy children are successful learners. School nurses meet a vital need, supporting the physical, emotional, and social health needs of students so they can focus on learning. The National Association of School Nurses estimates that we save a principal 60 minutes a day, a teacher 20 minutes a day, and multiply that by the number of teachers in each school, and an administrative assistant 45 minutes a day. It adds that as much as 30% of the school nurse's day is spent on mental health issues. Unfortunately, our salaries have consistently fallen short of national, state, and regional averages. Additionally, the current compensation plan allows no room for growth and no consideration for job experience or education. It's worth noting that there has been an unfilled school nurse position in this county for four months now and a shrinking substitute nurse pool. Potential employees have refused these positions due to low pay and lack of retirement benefits. The current budget proposal states that part of its goal is to, quote, "recruit and retain the highest caliber employees." The Evergreen Study has proposed a salary scale that would compensate nurses appropriately for our education, experience, dedication, and hard work, and encourage equally qualified nurses in the future. We respectfully submit two requests to the school board at this time. One, provide us with salaries that are competitive with nurses in other medical settings and other school districts and reflects our value in the schools. And two, recognize that we work full-time hours, though we are considered part-time staff, and compensate us accordingly. The nurses serving our school district come to work every day for the students in our schools, knowing that we could make significantly more money as an RN in any other nursing position. We stay because we know we make a difference in the lives of our students and because we love what we do. We thank you so much for your time and your consideration of our requests. As an addendum, looking at the time right now, we also would not be opposed to a two-hour delay tomorrow.
You may not find out about that tonight. Thank you, Miss Hager. Next is Lisa Thomas for school nutrition. Lisa here?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Thomas, the floating manager for school nutrition. Beverly Wimmer will actually be speaking on our behalf tonight.
When I was asked to do this, and I am Beverly Wimmer, when I was asked to do this, I thought I had three minutes. So I just have one piece of paper, so you all are in luck because I'm a real big talker. So you'd have probably been here a lot longer. Like I said, I am Beverly Wimmer, and I am thankful and proud to be a part of the school nutrition program for 23 years. I am here tonight to represent a group of ladies, these ladies right here, and also several that had to go home, who have young children that needed to go to bed. Because we are one of the groups of the earliest to go in. Most of us go in at 6:00 AM when a lot of people are still sleeping. But I'm here tonight representing these ladies and myself, and we have over 350 years of experience just as managers, and we are your managers. We, as a group, have a serious concern this year that weighs heavy on each of us. Due to the recent changes this year regarding the health insurance being offered and staff being able to keep their incentive, they now make more money on the hour and have the same benefits that we as managers have. We in no way begrudge our staff, but what we are asking is for things to be fair. We all started out where our staff is at. We all know how hard they work, but we also know how hard we work and how hard we've worked to get where we are. As managers, we have enormous responsibilities, one of which includes affixing our signature to legal, state, and federal reports. Failure to correctly complete these reports or signing a false report may result in federal fines and penalties, and that would affect us all. Some of the more critical responsibilities include preparing and serving safe, nutritious, and well-balanced meals. We are subject to multiple health inspections, annual audits by the VDOE and the USDA, and local accountability reviews. And if I may note here, in my 23 years of service, we have not been identified or accused as a source of a foodborne illness. This is a tremendous accomplishment for our certified staff, considering we prepare more than 7,000 meals per day, 180 days per year. Additionally, we maintain very expensive pieces of production equipment, track and control highly perishable inventory, complete accurate timesheets, manage labor while maintaining discipline, productivity, and healthy interpersonal working relationships, and the daily recording and deposit of high volumes of money. We are required to be prepared for an audit from the state, making sure our kitchens pass health inspections on any given day, as well as helping in the production of food. We make sure each student who comes through our lines receive a nutritious meal, meeting federal regulations for reimbursement. We, as managers, do what we do because we want each child to succeed to his or her fullest potential. We believe we play an integral part in their success. And if I could add here, you know, I'm on the high school level. So, you know, when it comes to school breakfast, sometimes you're thinking, ah, these kids aren't going to do it. We had a two-hour delay today, and we're not required to feed the students on two-hour delay because they get there, you know, an hour later, they're eating lunch. But I have chosen to always do breakfast regardless. So this morning, on an average, you know, I feed around 60 or so at breakfast. And for a small high school, Auburn High School, that's a pretty good number. And this morning, I fed 46. Now that tells you there are kids out there that's going to eat that. But we go that extra mile. We started the second chance breakfast last week. To you all, it may not seem like many, but I've increased my numbers from eight on the first day to 27 last Friday. That's a big number. That's 27 kids that we've touched by giving them a second chance to have breakfast. We now have two positions open, a floating manager and an assistant floating manager. No one, no one from in the school nutrition programs has applied for them. Why would they? They would not benefit from leaving their current position as a five-and-a-half, six-hour position person who comes in, goes home, no other responsibilities other than the five-and-a-half hours there. They don't have to take anything home with them. They don't have to worry about it. So why, they would not benefit from leaving that current position to have the responsibilities of a manager and make less money. To have a successful school nutrition program, we must take a look at what this recent action has done to the future of the management positions. Passion for what you do is a huge key to our success. But that is sometimes very hard to to keep when you feel you have been slighted. Please take into consideration what this has done to each manager and the future of our kitchens. We ask you for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.[614.23][614.23](Applause). Thank you. See, next is Connie Blosz from Special Education.
Did I get it right? Yes, you did.
All right.
Good evening, I am Connie Blosz and I'm a 14-year peri educator. I'm a member of the VEA Special Education Committee, a VEA trainer, and a member of the local Board for VEA. I'm also a person that started in 1976 as a student volunteer with special needs children and have been doing it for over 35 years. I love my job, I love the kids I work with. First, we want to thank you all for getting us health insurance finally. I came from a county that gave health insurance, pension, gave number sick days and number personal days, the same thing as a teacher. And when I moved here, I was in total shock that that didn't happen here. First, we would like to ask that the Board look at the salary scale. The Board, the superintendent recommended the repair of the salary scale that was recommended by the Green Study. We would like to see that put in place. Second, we're asking for an increase of sick days. Montgomery County is ranked 132nd out of 132nd on sick days and personal days. Most of the school divisions give their support professionals 10 to 12 sick days and two to three personal days. All we're asking for this year is two more sick days to our five and another personal day. Who is most likely to get sick? We are. We're the children who, the children are our responsibility. They come in sick and then we end up sick. We're there with them 24/7, and most of our special needs kids do not miss any days of school. They're there all the time. So, we're asking for some more sick days because we do get sick quite a bit, and we do need to be healthy, and we like to be healthy. We also ask for another personal day because we don't get the wellness days that the teachers do, and we feel like this would be something that would be advantageous to us. I thank you all and have a good evening. Oh, by the way, a two-hour delay, I live in Plaskett County, so I would love a two-hour delay.[764.32][764.32](Laughter).
Thank you. Thank you. Miki Williams, Technology.
My name is Kurt Warwick. Miki couldn't be here tonight. Last year, we came before the Board with the concern that our salary scale was unbalanced and only had 12 steps, and that as a group, we were topping out too early in our career. Evergreen Study that has been proposed in this year's budget addresses this concern. It looks to provide a pathway for a fuller career and recognizes our fair market value as technical staff. We would like to thank the Board for listening to our concerns and for taking action. We hope that you can find the means to support the plan in this and in future budgets. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Next is Kedith Mayner for our Bus Drivers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Dr. Meyer, nice to see you. I'm Kedith Mayner. I'm here tonight to represent the school bus drivers and the bus aides in Montgomery County. I've driven the bus for 27 years. I've also worked in the schools' various aides position for those 22. First of all, I'd like to say that we appreciate the School Board's support throughout the years, and we hope you continue to reinstate the pay skips we lost during our time of salaries were frozen. My fellow bus drivers and aides have expressed their concerns about our part-time employee incentive after reading the budget notes regarding the salary study that was done recently. We have been receiving the incentive since 1998, which is 18 years. It's called incentive, and that's exactly what it is. There are many part-time employees that would probably not be able to continue working here without that benefit. Many more that are retired from other jobs have said it would be not worth their time and effort without it. The Affordable Healthcare Act requires many of us to have health insurance now. Since the majority of drivers and aides do not have enough hours to get health insurance provided as benefit, many of us have to use the incentive to purchase it. Drivers and other part-time employees in many of our surrounding counties have health insurance and retirement benefits for years. A couple of years ago, one of our neighboring counties took away their driver benefits. Approximately 40 of them resigned or retired at the end of this school year. I'm sure many of you saw that on the news. I'm sure we would all hate to see that happen here. The part-time incentive benefit was suspended for all new employees starting this school year. So, now, we have no incentive and nothing to look forward to. They are just worth as much to us and other employees as it is to any. The aide I have on my special needs bus is one of the most employees, she's one of the most valuable employees to me and to my students on my special need bus. We have already lost several drivers this year that did not have part-time incentive because they have no pay for their government-required health insurance and had to find jobs that provided it. They couldn't afford to drive a school bus. Good drivers are very hard to replace, and the training requirements are very extensive. We just had a servicing meeting on January the 5th, and the insurance company representative congratulated all of us bus drivers for having one of the best safety records for the last several years in the other county and the state of Virginia and Tennessee. He emphasized that we are traveling 1.2 million miles a year, transporting 7,000 students, and we do it very safely, day in and day out. Our drivers are obviously a very valuable asset to this county. We have highly qualified drivers and aides, and we hope you will continue to support us as you have in the past. And thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mayner.[1041.14][1041.14](Applause). Next is Jason Lawrence, Transportation Technicians.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Meyer. My name is Jason Lawrence, I'm the Vehicle Fleet Shop Foreman for the Transportation Department, and thank you for allowing us time to speak this evening. A little about our department, we currently have eight garage staff that oversee our fleet of 130 school buses, 78 trucks and cars, and over 40 pieces of maintenance equipment such as tractors, backhoes, and lawnmowers. A fleet this size requires over 900 vehicle services per year. Those 900 services do not include breakdowns or other malfunctions that we face during the year. So, as you can see, our technicians have plenty to keep them busy. Our fleet of school buses range from 2001 to 2017 models and travel approximately 1.2 million miles a year. I know 2001 doesn't seem that long, but 15 years of age on a school bus is a long time. Our support vehicle fleet ranges from 1972 models up to 2016s and are used by every department in the school system. Most of our vehicles are in good condition, but there are several that really need to be replaced due to age, mileage, or condition. Thank you for your continued support in the purchase of new buses and vehicles. The newer our fleet stays, the less downtime we see, and also the maintenance costs associated with these vehicles is reduced. A little about our personnel, we currently have seven technicians and one assistant. They range from one year of service up to 17 years of service. All of them were technicians at other locations before coming to MCPS. This is the best group of technicians that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. These men spend early mornings and late evenings working adverse conditions to get the students to school and back home safe and on time. And as you all know, it was very cold this morning. These guys were out very early for buses that wouldn't start, and if I'm not mistaken, we only had one bus that was late to school this morning, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you all for looking into implementing the recommendation from the Evergreen Salary Study. As you know, the Support Services Salary Scale only has 12 steps. So, a lot of our technicians were at the top or near the top and were kind of stuck, no place to go from there. So, just the talk of having a salary scale with 25 steps and room to grow has helped the morale in the garage already. The new salary scale will definitely help to recruit and retain the highest-quality employees, and the highest-quality employees is what the students of Montgomery County deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Rick Weaver for the Montgomery County Principals Association.
I'm representing the Principals Association, which is composed of principals, assistant principals, and curriculum supervisors. I've spoken to you on behalf of this group in the past, and our message has consistently been that all employee groups need to be treated fairly inequitably. The members of the Montgomery County Principals Association believe that Montgomery County has lots of hard-working employees in all employee groups. All employee groups should be compensated in a way that recognizes their hard work and their dedication. Every individual is important to the success of the organization, and their reward for a job well done is the salary that they earn. Every individual should be compensated equitably based on their experience, their education, and their skills. As hiring managers, we further know that it truly takes competitive salaries to attract and to hire good employees. Our message this year is a little different because significant change is being considered, and as you know, change makes people pretty nervous. We appreciate the Board's willingness to undertake the Evergreen Study and to consider the relative value of our salaries as compared to market value. The study appears to have been thoughtful, and the recommendations appear to support all employees. We respectfully ask the Board to give careful consideration to the study's recommendations and to implement them in a way that keeps everyone informed and ultimately provides equity across all employee groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.[1334.51][1334.51](Applause). Our last employee group to present tonight is Montgomery County Education Association, represented by Robbie Jones.
Good evening, I'm Robbie Jones, President of the Montgomery County Education Association. I would like to begin by thanking you for your past support and your future support. Historically, I have stood here as the president's before me telling you the difficulties that employees have, some having to work two and three jobs just to make ends meet, the impact larger class sizes has on the students and the teachers, how teachers have bought supplies out of their own pocket for their students so they can have a successful day. And I could go on and on and on, but I stand in front of you tonight feeling hopeful. The budget meetings I've attended recently have been more positive than any of them I've ever gone to. With the superintendent recommending compensation repair, that includes a part-time incentive including that into the part-time support staff salary, that would make a huge difference. We fully support the recommendation along with maintaining single subscriber insurance, no cost to the employee. Also, with the budget increasing for supplies, that's less money out of pocket for the teachers. We're also asking that part-time employees receive two additional days of sick leave per calendar year. They are the ones that are hands-on with the students, and whatever the students have, they're more than likely going to get it. We look forward to working with you and to lobbying our Board of Supervisors and our state government. We will be in Richmond on February 1st, and like I said, we look forward to working closely with you, and whatever you need the Education Association to do, just let us know and ask. We're only a phone call away. And I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And as Justin Lucas said earlier, it's truly a team effort, and it's, and I appreciate all those, all the groups. We can't do it without every single one of you and every single employee group. This would not happen on a daily basis for our kids and everyone. It's so, so important. So, thank you for sticking in here tonight with us and speaking. All right, next, STEM Teaching and Learning, Patricia Gudrow, Supervisor of Science, Health, and Physical Education, Athletics, and Rick Weaver, Supervisor of Career and Technical Education and Business Partnerships, will provide an update tonight on science, technology, engineering, and math STEM, teaching and learning at Montgomery County Schools.
Ms. Coran, members of the Board, Dr. Myers. Mr. Weaver and I are glad to give you this update on STEM education in Montgomery County Schools. We know the hour is late, and we will try to be succinct. We're all familiar with the acronym STEM and many of the other terms that are meant to define what people are actually doing with science, technology, engineering, and math. In its purest sense, STEM integrates those four areas in a balanced way. Our view is that there are many ways to connect curriculum to the four STEM areas. For example, an art teacher may want to do a project that pulls in some technology and science, and in doing so, will support STEM education. Using this thinking, we'll share ways that integrated STEM education is growing in Montgomery County Schools. Integrated STEM content fits the model for effective instruction. Curriculum integration is an instructional strategy that allows some students to make greater sense of abstract and technical concepts. The engineering design process engages students in higher-order thinking, which lands it right in the engagement wedge. Designing and building embodies application as students create and model their ideas. Here's a list of some of the things that we're currently doing with integrated teaching and learning through engineering design. We won't go through every bullet, but we'll highlight a few for you. The first is design briefs. These are essentially a one-pager presented to a student that challenges them to solve a problem or build something, and will give them some materials and other parameters such as size to deal with. Moving this forward in K5, we've placed a children's book at each grade level in each school along with a design brief to support both reading and STEM. For example, we have a book out there by Curious George, and the design brief has students building a habitat for a pet, just like Curious George is trying to do in the book.
There are a couple of notable things going on in the middle schools around technology ed and agriculture. Technology ed may be the first place that students really get immersed in the STEM design-build concept. They do projects related to engineering and a wide variety of technical areas, including coding, electronics, and computer programming. In agri-science in the middle school, the curriculum includes on-hand science projects in chemistry, biology, and physics. This is truly the first large introduction to some STEM disciplines that our students see.
We wanted you to know that makerspaces are expanding in our elementary schools, but they look different from school to school. At its best, we have a specific room that's filled with stuff for kids to build from, and teachers can take an entire class there, and they can start building, and they can leave their projects there and come back at different times and work on them. But a lot of schools don't have an entire room that they can dedicate as a maker space, so they've gotten creative in doing other things. Some schools might just have a closet or a storage area where they store lots of materials that can be used for making and designing things. And still, other schools will designate a timeframe where kids design things at home and then bring them back to the school, tweak them, and put them on display for a designated period. So, we hope that that movement is going to continue to expand.
Another notable way that CTE is involved in Another notable way that CTE is involved in the STEM world in grades of six through 12 are CTE student co-curricular organizations. You've seen many of these students in front of you before, being awarded for state and national competitions that they've attended and achieved note in. These competitions at the local and national level are very STEM-oriented very often and are quite an integral part of what we try to do in STEM world.
STEM clubs are a very promising practice. We hope that students in every school will be able to gather and enjoy interacting with the STEM community through a range of activities, including robotics, coding, and design-build Before we talk about our STEM clusters in the schools, we wanted to revisit the 16 career clusters that many of you have already seen. As we connect our electives to these projected job clusters, you'll notice that there is a STEM cluster already specified. It's the second one from the end. In that job definition are included primarily engineering and research jobs. But we know in the clusters that we've highlighted in yellow that these also will draw heavily from science, technology, engineering, and math. Even those clusters that remain in white arguably will rely on technology-literate employees. So, as we talk about our STEM curriculum, we hope you'll see how relevant science, technology, engineering, and math is to many employment areas here in the New River Valley.
You see here a list of some of the CTE programs that we offer in Montgomery County. These are the ones that we felt like were the most STEM-heavy. They aren't the only ones, but they are the most significant STEM-heavy programs. STEM is the essence of most, if not all, CTE programs. All of the programs listed here have a clear nexus to technology, science, and/or engineering. Each program area represents multiple courses leading to industry certifications. These robust programs accept and nurture students at all academic levels in the STEM world.
So, in closing, here are some important next steps. First, we're going to be meeting with teachers and administrators to discuss how we can share our ideas and how we can support integrated STEM teaching and learning. We know that this will include planning for professional development. Second, our STEM Academy model offers flexibility and focus for students interested in advanced manufacturing. Our long-term plan is to grow the model to support many different career areas, such as health occupations. Third, we're building on the role that the New River Community College career coaches and guidance counselors play in helping our students understand the career clusters and then to choose the most relevant courses for their plans. Finally, STEM co-curricular experiences offer students with shared interests an opportunity to work together on a challenging application that requires teamwork in order to be successful. By expanding these kinds of experiences, we hope to give more students the opportunity to experience a 21st century working environment that includes collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. Do you have any questions for us about STEM?
Just regarding the what we are doing slide, the most of the activities that are listed there, they are in-school activities, all right? Or some of them are out of school?
Some of them are in-school, yes. Let's go back to the list. But a lot of them are after-school or summer programs.
Okay.
Things like the Ira Code are not necessarily part of the curriculum, or I Dream Seaview Summer is a summer program. Project-based camps, probably project-based camps are not in the school day. Camp Invention is not. So, you can see there are several things that are what we would consider extracurricular. We tried to show you a mix of the things that we're doing, both extracurricular and curriculum.
Thank you.
In the industry, what is the STEM certification going to benefit these students that are graduating with that?
Do you mean the STEM Academy endorsement?
Yes.
It's going to be very helpful because it tells employers that they have taken certain courses, many of them at higher levels, either dual-enrolled or AP, that are directly related to STEM. Plus, they'll be earning an industry certification, so depending on what area they're in, that's sort of a seal to the employer, saying that they actually have learned the skills that they were going to school to learn. And we think that's going to go a long way, not just towards employment, but also higher education and even military. So, we think it will be very meaningful.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Patty and Rick, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, next, VSB A charter school resolution. The Virginia School Board Association has asked all school boards to consider a resolution stating opposition to the charter school constitutional amendment currently being considered by the General Assembly. We have a copy of the resolution on the agenda tonight for your consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Froggett or Ms. Graham, half and half second. All those in favor?
Can we discuss this first, please?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
I find, first and foremost, I find us being threatened by charter schools, because that's the way it's painted a lot of times, as being a little bit, I'm a little concerned about it. I understand the concerns from a local school board standpoint. I don't know that all charter schools are bad. I think it's this kind of constitutional amendment, or opposition to this constitutional amendment, kind of paints that picture. On the other hand, and the reason I actually, I considered not voting for this, but I am going to vote for it because principle, because of a principle that I hold very true and dear, and that is that we need to be able to govern at the lowest level. And I, while I am not completely against charter schools, I am against the ability for us to make that decision. I think too many times, we rely upon a higher level of government to make decisions for us when we can actually make those decisions. And so, based upon that principle, I am going to vote for it tonight, and I wanted that to just be stated very publicly.
Well, I think it's also important to understand that it takes away public dollars for our public school students. And with what we've been going through the last few years, I think it's important to follow what these folks have taken the time to talk to us about and add teachers back and add opportunities back for the students. And, you know, if we had a $6 million surplus, that'd be great and wonderful, and maybe we would consider a charter school in this area. But I think first and foremost, we need to take care of our students.
Any more discussions, board members? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution passed.
Okay, next, work session, meeting format. Part of my commitment to you in my entry plan is to, one, build a strong working relationship with all of you. And what I'm recommending is that the second meeting of the month, we actually move to a, to a true work session for that second meeting. I think it will help in our relationship building with ourselves and our office, central office folks here at the school board office. You know, during that meeting, there will be a lot of items on the agenda, such as personal report, finance report, that will be just simply routine as usual. But what, the majority of those will be presentations. You know, I'd much rather have sat around a table in the conference room. Your STEM presentation was perfect, okay? It was excellent. I just felt, feel like we could have had a better conversation about STEM if we were sitting around a table with Patty and Rick, as opposed to our current format here and the way we set. And I think that's, that's really, really important that we do that. And so, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to recommend that we move, starting the second meeting in March, and that will give us time to get the room ready and that type of thing, to the conference room in the school board office, a smaller setting, you know, in an arrangement that, that we can have, I think, better conversations with each other and our principal's office staff, whomever speaks with us and presents during that time. So, most present, what we would envision is most presentations happening during that second board meeting. So, the presentation is more interactive with, with our folks in central office.
A couple of questions, just about as far as the public is concerned. First question is, will these meetings still be filmed for the public to be able to view later?
And that will be up to you. We can, we can arrange a setting to do so. It's up to you whether you see a need to actually film those or not. That would be up to you.
The second question-
And I need that recommendation from you, because we need to make arrangements to do so, if that's the case.
The second question would be, are we planning to completely eliminate public address during those meetings?
I would propose doing public address during the first meeting of the month during this forum, just for the sake of time and for us being able to work. And I don't think, I think you've shown tonight that, you know, however long it takes, you know, we're going to allow folks to speak in this setting. And so, that would be my proposal.
Members asked that we come back, take a look at school start times because of the preponderance of research that people had read.
Well, again, I, I'm not going to discredit the studies. The studies are there, the facts are there. I'm not discrediting those. But if we had a problem with those numbers, then I would say, yes, let's do this if we it. But I don't see that there's a need for us, if that's going to be part of our why, I want it to be a definite reason that we need to do it, and I don't see that.
We're, we're on a good upward trend, and we want to stay on that trend. Certainly have schools that are struggling to stay on that trend. So, achievement is what it is, and we look at it each year, but we hope we can stay on that upward trend.
We've been doing good for the past four or five years without changing school start times. I'm just going to say that.
But I think it goes beyond just academic achievement. I think actually, when I've looked at the research, and I've actually changed my mind on, on this topic, and, and the reason is because of what the research says about health and safety. But anyway, I guess, this is kind of a point of order. I, I'm wondering if we shouldn't finish our questions to the committees, and then maybe we should then go into, you know, more general discussion about this, because I did still have some more questions and wanted to try to stay focused on, on that. On the student-
Yeah, we have to make sure, if we have a chance to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, waiting patiently.
While we're talking about points of order, I thought I would take the opportunity to let the board members know, I think only two sitting board members have had this happen before, but Policy 1-1.6 of Montgomery County School Board Policy states that meetings will adjourn no later than 11:30 or 11:20, so we've got a little bit of time. But we stopped for a point of order, so I thought, oh, I can pop right in there. In order to continue after 11:30, someone from the board will just need to make a motion to do so. So, if it hasn't happened by one or two minutes after 11:30, either she or I will trigger you, just like we did for public address, and ask for that to happen. Thank you.
Apparently, the only person hasn't spoken here, so I guess I will at this point. Just going through the slides, starting off with student achievement, I do take a little exception with the accusation that this is for Blacksburg, especially given that a lot of the research shows that the students that often benefit the most from this are the ones who are either struggling or in socioeconomic, difficult times, those types of things. And you can look at any of our numbers-
Wait a minute. I need to stop you with that, because you're implying that students in Blacksburg don't have those same situations.
No, what I'm trying, if you'll let me finish. When you look simply at the numbers in all of our schools, we have a higher percentage of kids, for example, on free and reduced lunch in our other strands. Now, I'm not saying we don't have them in Blacksburg, too. I believe the numbers are around 20% overall. They vary greatly among the elementary schools, with Price's Fork being over 50% and other schools being much smaller. But that said, again, I, you know, in terms of student achievement, I expect this to benefit some of our kids that are struggling the most, and that's what the research shows. One interesting data point that does involve Blacksburg, that, especially when you talk about, Ms. Bond was talking about the, in particular, the early releases and losing class time. We do have a data point in Blacksburg, which was the year that the gym collapsed, and our kids, of course, were on night school. They were going to school at 2:30 in the afternoon. And their, their days were shorter, they missed a lot of time because of the weeks that the schools were closed before they could get them reopened. That year, Blacksburg High School had the highest AP scores they'd had ever, and they weren't able to repeat that again until this past year, when we made the block scheduling change, which was another change that was very contentious. So, in terms of student achievement, we actually have our own data to show that it can happen, not just SOWs. We have other things as well. As far as athletics, it does, and I'm glad Ms. Graham asked about the practices being allowed in the morning, because I do know we already have a lot of students that either want to come in and work in the weight room. Trak, I know, has been practicing in the morning for a long time. So, I do hope that we will allow that, those groups to continue, and even look on a case-by-case basis to those that if they want to practice in the morning, we shouldn't restrict them from it necessarily. And also, I've observed what Ms. Graham has said, there's a lot of times when the kids are just kind of hanging out in the office, waiting for their coach to arrive, or they're down in the weight room working out. So, practices, some of those practices, I don't see necessarily having to start an hour later, but maybe only half an hour later. And I thought it was interesting that, to say that the games wouldn't really change. And I'm assuming that's because we already have a lot of systems around us that are on this schedule, and we're already accommodating them. School nutrition, I mean, I think that one was covered very well. Student safety, one of the things that I, and first of all, I want to appreciate, I want to thank the parents that have stayed here tonight for this, especially sitting through all the presentations from our employees, because I'm hoping it gives you an idea of just how great the needs are in this system right now. I started as a parent advocate of the collapse of the high school gym, and I came back lots of times to advocate for more than just one issue, to advocate for budget, to advocate for teachers. I'm hoping, because I know for a lot of you, this is the first time we've seen you here, I'm hoping to see you back for other issues involving our students. You've indicated you really care about students, so I hope you'll be there when we're fighting for budget. I hope you'll be there when we're fighting for whatever we're fighting for, to help our students and our teachers. And you heard tonight a lot about what those needs are. We're going to hear a lot about it when we have our meetings in Christiansburg to talk about facilities over there, which are in not-so-great shape, and especially when you look at trying to be equitable across this county for all students to have the same opportunities that the students at our newer schools have, the students at our older schools should have, too. So, we have a lot of needs that need to be met here. That getting me back, so as I said, I hope we'll see you again to advocate for this. But one of the things I wanted to bring up as far as safety is, and it was mentioned that, and I want to appreciate Ms. Diggs for giving us a chart. We didn't really get a lot of charts. I was expecting to see more of those. The fact that we'll have fewer kids standing outside, and I know I've emailed several of you and stated the fact that I went and looked at all of our bus routes. Right now, according to our bus routes, the earliest pickup time is 6:08 a.m. in Auburn. Auburn Strand has really the worst pickup times of any of our strands. Calculating those, we have 84% of our secondary students being picked up before 7 a.m. right now in the Auburn Strand. That is 54% in Blacksburg and 50% in Christiansburg and Shawsville. Under this new implementation, we'll have no students being picked up before 7 a.m., which is a whole lot better than a lot of systems have achieved that have done this change. And you may recall that the original implementation called for a 6:50 first pickup time. We compromised, we took time away from our older kids, worked on the bus schedules to move that later. My hope is that all of you will be here if we do implement this, to make that even better, to keep chipping away at it, working on it. One thing I want to say is, the reason I brought up all of our needs, this decision was made 18 or so years ago because of money. And it, and I think one of the speakers tonight asked, why can't we just send everyone at the same time, which would be the obvious, easy answer to this. No one would have to get up early. That's sort of a win-win for everyone. There are logistics issues there, too. We can't do it because of the cost involved to provide the buses to do that. And when you look, for example, and I'm just using Fairfax because that's one that we've pointed to, their implementation is very different from- their implementation is very different from ours, and it had to be because of their demographics. They spent millions of dollars just to do what they're doing. If you scaled that down to our size, to a system our size, it would be the equivalent of us spending $188,000 on buses. As it is right now, we're not, it appears we're not going to spend anything. I think we should be looking at trying to tighten those times down, getting our younger kids on the buses later by adding a bus here, adding a bus there, shortening those routes. There are things we can do to improve this implementation. But as I've said, we have to start somewhere. Just, it's kind of unfortunate that we weren't able to see this before the meeting tonight. It's obviously had a lot of thought and a lot of work put into it. And I just glanced quickly at the implementation time suggested in there and noted that it is similar to one that the committee did look at and did reject, which was to shift everyone later. There were a lot of reasons why they rejected that. One of them being, and we've heard from elementary teachers. So, to say, you know, the majority of our teachers feel this way, I don't know that I totally agree with that either. But we have heard from elementary teachers, particularly those that teach younger elementary students, how they lose their kids after lunch. They start fading in that part of the day. Particularly when they've already spent an hour or so in daycare in the morning and then they come to school, they have another transition to make. So, we have heard from a lot of people who are for this change as well. And I understand that everyone here tonight came out, you know, because they are opposed to it. And obviously, no one came out tonight to speak in favor of it, although I know there are people sitting in here who are because I recognize them and I've seen their emails and we've been getting them. A lot of those from folks saying they support this as well. So, it's hard for me to sit here and say that necessarily a majority. But the thing that strikes me the most, which comes back to the health and safety issues, achievement is not my primary reason for supporting this. The main reason I support this is the health of our secondary students in particular. And it is heart-wrenching to hear your stories about what this is going to do to your family. But I've seen some heart-wrenching cases, too, of kids who were damaged, damaged by the start time that we currently have for our secondary students. And you have to see that to understand what it's like to see a child suffering from sleep deprivation, trying to get to school. Now, are we going to have that situation with our younger children? Obviously, we have to look at that and see. We have to study it more, I agree with that. But I think we need to do it as we implement this, as part of the implementation, so that we can prove upon it. And if necessary, if we have to come up with the money to make this work for everyone, that's what we need to do finally. Because 18 years ago, our board made a mistake. They had no idea at the time, when they put us on this double bus system, what they were doing. There was no evidence, no reason for them to think there would be a problem with this. We didn't know that. But over the years, that was almost two decades ago, over the years, health professionals started seeing the effects on our older kids of being sleep deprived. And, you know, particularly if you look at the circadian rhythm research, it states, and this is not kids not wanting to go to bed. They physically, many of them cannot go to sleep until 11:00 p.m. And if they have to be on a bus at 6:08 a.m., we are physically making it impossible for them to get enough sleep. And I can't willingly do that. That doesn't mean I don't want to look at our younger kids and what effect it's going to have on it. We delayed this in order to start that process. Because it was originally slated to start this year. And I think delaying was the right thing to do. But we have, again, we have to start somewhere. And I know everyone sitting out there just about is going to disagree with me. But it's something we have to do. Our older kids were the guinea pigs for many years. I don't want our younger kids to be guinea pigs. I'm sorry.
If, I have to disagree on the 18-year-ago thing because if I remember when it was changed, it wasn't all because of money. It was also because of having the younger kids and the older kids riding the same bus.
Yes, and that is a problem.
That was a huge issue. Having older kids at home to take care of younger kids, that was a huge issue, too. It wasn't only about money.
Right, but the big savings is always money.
If we can find the money for buses to help with this transition, why can't we find the money to keep, to make, to find the 20 minutes for high schoolers, which I know 20 minutes in the morning is huge? Why can't we implement that and just make that change? If we can find it now, why can't we find it back then? And why can't we find the money?
Can I move that we extend our meeting?
I was about to say that.
Second.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Is all in favor? We have, we have motion, all right, in the second.
We have a motion in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
So, to continue what I was saying, we did not know when we made this switch that there would be anything wrong with it. So, there's no fault in our system or our school board for doing that when they did it. And it did seem like a very good thing to do at the time. I grew up in a school system where all ages went on the same bus together. And no, it is not good having kindergartners on the same bus with high schoolers. It's not necessarily even good to have middle schoolers on the bus with high schoolers sometimes. So, that said, I mean, they had good reason for making the change. They had no reason to think that there would be any detrimental effects in doing this. And it's taken two decades and a lot of research to even discover that there were issues. And granted, you know, there have been more, there have definitely been more studies on teens because that's where the health problems were creeping up, is in our teens. So, that generated a lot of research. But we have had younger kids going during that time, too. The numbers vary, but anywhere from 40 to 60% of school systems are on one system or the other. So, we've had younger kids in other systems going, and we have not seen the same detrimental effects that they have documented in teens. And it's that that compels me to say we have to do something for our teens. Where do we start? That's the question I think we have to answer.
Help me understand, then, why colleges don't feel that it's so detrimental?
Actually, there's a lot of research that colleges are considering starting at 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock.
And my 21-year-old sleeps every minute that he can. It doesn't end. And, you know, I disagree with that they made this horrible mistake 18 years ago. That's your opinion and I appreciate it and respect it. But that's not my opinion. And, you know, and we have gotten a few emails supporting it, but we've gotten many, 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 many against it. And there have been a few teachers that have shared with me, but I've had lots and lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of teachers that say, why are you doing this? Why? And more high school students would be here saying, don't do this, if they felt like anybody would listen to them. And they weren't so shy. Because I got stopped in the mall the other night, I got stopped in Target, I got stopped in Walmart. I can't go anywhere. Somebody doesn't stop me and say, what do I need to do?
And I've been stopped in coffee shops and other places from parents saying, please do this change. I'm not going to have to, I'm not going to have to put my child in morning daycare anymore. I'm going to be able to put them right on the bus myself. So, we know there are people that are going to suffer and we know there are people that are going to benefit from it. And, you know, there's both sides.
The only thing that concerns me is we look at it as detrimental for what it's done to the teenagers, but we're not looking at the detrimental that it's going to cause for the elementary. Why is it that it's so bad for one? No, we're not.
We are. I mean, so, I've been listening, I've been listening, I've been listening on this topic for a really long time and I've been doing my research on this. I guess we're just going to go ahead and get into this without further questions for the committee, although maybe we can go back to that. But, you know, I feel like I have done my homework on this. And I've looked at the research and I've asked the question, this is not an easy thing. And for every person that's in here, I dare say there's at least one, if not more, people out in the county that think this is a done deal because it was already voted on before because they already came out in October of 2014 and presented. When I was campaigning, knocking on people's door, most people said to me, what are we waiting for? We should have done this years ago. You know, and I would explain why we're waiting and why it's important to go through a prob- I mean, I'm not completely tone deaf, but, you know, I think for me, when you look at the research, there's, you know, there's a stack this high that says, here's all the damage that we're doing to our secondary students, especially high school, by having these early start times. And then there's like one or two papers that are ever mentioned for elementary. And so, I went and sought those papers out. And one of them is the Kentucky Study, it's the Keller Study. And it's actually, I mean, I talked to some people who are more expert about this than I am, but, you know, the methodology of that study is in some question. First of all, what that study found, actually, they did, they found some possible detriment to elementary kids with the time change, I believe. But it was only in like more affluent schools. And they couldn't, they couldn't create the link between, you know, when you do a research study, there's so many things you have to control for to make sure that it's not something else. And they couldn't quite get that link in place. And other people have tried to do the same study and have not come up with the same results. And this is pretty typical when you're doing research. That, you know, somebody finds out one thing, but, you know, over time, you know, that's why it's peer-reviewed and other experts look at these papers and either figure out where that person went wrong, or they start doing more experiments and the evidence piles up. I think in this case, it's piling up in the direction that we've gone. It's piled up in favor of later start time for the secondary kids. So, I mean, as I listen, I mean, there's some things that keep being said that I just think are not true. I mean, one of the things that people say that if the secondary kids, you know, get an extra hour, they're just going to sleep later. And if that was the case, then we wouldn't see the evidence in that mountain of research. Because all they would have done was taken an extra hour, stayed up an extra hour, still been sleep deprived, and we wouldn't see any differences. So, we got to be careful about what, you know, the things that are true and the things that aren't. I've got a whole list of things that everybody's been saying. I don't know that I'll spit it all out tonight. Maybe I'll do a blog post or something on some of this stuff. But, you know, for me, some of the things that have bubbled up to the top as being really important is childcare, sleep, and safety. And I think I put those in the order of things that can be mitigated. Because really, we have a problem. Our problem is that we're sending our secondary kids, you know, your elementary kids, my elementary kids, I am an elementary father. You know, we're doing, we're going to do damage to our kids in a few years. And that's, we don't want to be there. So, let's find some solutions, and I would love to find solutions that work for everybody. And when I campaigned, I said, I'm for later start, the secondary kids have to go later. So, in my mind, that really kind of leaves you, at least with the buses that we have, with two options. You either push both start times later and keep things the way they are, or you flip the schedule and maybe adjust the times a little bit. And what the board did last year is they flipped the schedule, saying elementary start times are going to be started at 7:45. And I came out and I spoke against that because I did think that that was still too early. And, you know, I think one of the compromises that was done was to try to, you know, push that time by 15 minutes. And, you know, I think that pushing the time for, we would have to push high school time forward by, or middle school, I guess, secondary, an average of about 45 minutes in order to get to where the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends. And if we do that, we're going to have to push elementary start times to, what, 9:30, 9:45? I mean, depending on how you tweak things. And I think that in talking to teachers and in talking to educators and in talking to other counties who've implemented this, I think I realized why that option wasn't given, although I think it probably should have been out there for discussion. But I think that's not a very good solution. If you move things half an hour, you're not, you're not giving your high school kids enough time. I mean, some of the research that I read actually said that you really need, I mean, most of the stuff, some stuff said an hour and a half, some stuff said an hour. So, I don't know how much, I mean, 20 minutes, you're right, it's better than nothing. But I'd really like to get to, you know, a solution. And when I think about what the solutions are going to be, I keep coming back to the switch. I mean, I think that's the most elegant solution. It puts elementary kids in school early in the morning when they're the sharpest, when they're alert and learning. It minimizes the time for the high school kids when it's the opposite for them. Now, in implementing this, I think that I would certainly be open to tweaking it some. And, you know, what defines as a tweak, you know? I've thrown out five, 10, 15 minutes, possibly. I think we start at the 20 minutes, 30 minutes. Maybe we're re-implementing something completely different at that point. But if we keep the flip that we have and delay both times by five or 10 or 15 minutes, I mean, that certainly takes care of, you know, if we have any transportation problems, that takes care of that. It will certainly help with the sleep issues for elementary kids. So, I mean, I'm throwing out some ideas for what we can do as a small step. But I will say that the childcare piece of this is still very important to me. And that's the one that's the most concerning. And, you know, if we're not going to make it, I want to know sooner than later. And I don't know if we can know, but that's something to me, it's, I think what's been out there so far has been unsatisfactory to a lot of parents. And I have to stop and say, thank you guys for all your hard work because I know you've been working really hard on this. And I know that, you know, you're doing the things that you were charged to do, you know, a school board ago or an administration ago. But, you know, to me, I really kind of want to dig down into some of this stuff and make sure that we're going to be able to implement it. Because if we're not, then I want to know that sooner. And then, you know, I mean, either way, I think that, I would say that's kind of a disaster, but, you know. So, that's my thinking. And with that, and I'll just say one more thing. And that's why I kind of want to ask more questions of the staff on implementation because I think that's an important piece of this for me.
I'm going to make one more comment. Let me finish. One of my biggest concerns, and no disrespect when I say this about nutrition, okay? But, you know, eight or 10 years ago, the big push was to institute all the nutritional programs. Everybody thought it was great and grand. And in my opinion, no disrespect, but it's turned into a disaster. And that's what concerns me. And, you know, we've done different things since I've been on the board because everybody else is doing them. And then we turn back and go, wow. That's, those are the concerns I have. If we had a magic ball, it would be great. And, you know, sometimes when you haven't walked in those footprints of that person who's had that type student, it's easy to make a decision.
Okay, so, the childcare is huge for me, too.
It is for me as well.
I think that's the biggest issue for everyone.
I think that's an issue that's unsolved.
Can I make, I'm sorry, childcare that concerns me as well is we don't, we do not bus outside of, in other words, we'll drop a child off if the, if it's within the zone of the child.
And if there's capacity on the bus.
And capacity on the bus. And so, you know, hearing there's limited numbers of childcare providers in Christiansburg, that really concerns me. And, you know, I haven't looked into this, but the ability to actually take kids outside of the zone to get to another child provider probably will not work. So, that is something that truly, truly concerns me about the implementation of this. Now, you ask, can we do it? Sure. You know, we can do it, but my question is at what cost to the families?
Sure, yeah.
And that's something that we need to definitely consider.
Well, we can do it. I think when I ask, can we do it, is if we do it and half our, you know, parents who want childcare don't have it, then that's, we can do it.
That's right, exactly.
That's what we can do.
And not to mention, can't afford it. If you take them out of their school zone, they may not be able to get to their child or pick them up. And as far as us having our own little sampling with Blacksburg, that was one part of the community. And did we break those numbers down with every child to see what that situation was and how that affected even the elementary children in those families? Because everything got flipped upside down. You know, I really, I really don't think folks are hearing what's going to happen with those, with the elementary students. They have activities and things, too. They go to their older siblings' activities. They're not going to be going to bed. They're, you're not going to make it. My, I have grandchildren. One is eight and the other are two and three and one. And it's all my daughter can do to get him home by 8:00 o'clock after activities in school and homework and all that. It just, it's just not realistic. It's not going to happen.
One of my questions to all those discussions-
One of my questions to all those discussions, I mean, I definitely worried about childcare. I definitely worry about long drive, driveways in rural communities. And I know it's hard to find all the answers, especially without implementing. Because some of the things, like the bus routes, are they gonna work really? We cannot run empty buses without the kids to figure that out. Or we cannot run it with this schedule and pretending that we know what's gonna happen when we switch the schedule. So that is only can be, you know, I hate to say trial and error, but it will be trial and error. You have to really run that to be able to figure out, it's gonna maybe perfectly work, or it's not gonna work, and we're gonna find out within a couple of weeks that we are not picking them up at seven o'clock. I mean, you know, it has been, gonna be tried to be perfect, but it may not be perfect. And I think none of us can guarantee up here sitting that it's gonna be perfect. But only, well, I still truly believe it's the right thing to do. And even though I see all the problems that are gonna cause, and obviously we're all caring people, but we are caring people, too. And this is not something that we wanna do it to harm the part of the communities. So it will be good for the rest of the community. And I don't think any of us have that intention. I definitely don't. I've been swayed by every email I read. But there are, you know, positive ones looking at it differently, and there are also negative ones that, you know, obviously you guys are representing that part. I think my, one, my question is, how come it works in the other localities that surround us, which is 16 of them? And we are the really only ones starting our elementary schools at nine o'clock? And some of the communities like Borata, I'm not going to Fairfax. I know that's not a match. I mean, I, I can, you know, I'm smart enough to know that. But, you know, Borata County or Roanoke County, I know they may not be still exact match. I don't think there's any exact match to Montgomery County, as far as I can, I can see. Just the diversity, different communities, different needs. But how come they are making it work? You know, that's my question to all of you, my question to my board members. And again, out of 17,300 traditional public schools, 60% starts after eight o'clock. High schools. So it, it happens. It happens in California, it happens in Rhode Island, it happens Washington State, and since 1996, it happens. And somehow, they're making it work. Maybe they're providing, you know, scholarship for the daycare. I, I don't know. Maybe they have great daycare system. I did not look every state how it works and how it doesn't work. But it has been working and, and in 1999, NIH, CDC, AAP, NSF, those are big institutions doing research. I mean, they are not, we can't discredit them. And they're all saying this is a good thing to do. Not that, you know, put, put your elementary, get under the bus. I mean, they're not saying that, obviously. But they're saying that this is good for your secondary kids. And when you say secondary kids, your 11-year-old, sixth grader is a secondary kid, too. So we're not talking about old 17, 18-year-olds or 16, 17-year-olds out there that we're worried about. And to me, it was never for the achievement. It was for me to teach them at the right time with their biological cycle. And that is, I don't think anybody can deny that's the best thing to do. And in 1996, this professor of psychiatry, human behavior at Brown University said, it's Dr. Mary Karskado, I might be butchering the last name. But she said, given that the primary focus of education is to maximize human potential, then a new task before us, this is 17 years ago, is to ensure that the conditions in which learning takes place to address the very biology of the learners. I mean, that's what at least my desire to be able to, you know, achieve in this county. And 17 years after, we're about to implement, may not be perfect, may not work, but without trying, we will never know. And, you know, we can study another year, we can spend money, we can, like the Evergreen study, we can hire people to look at it, which Fairfax did, because they had the means. I mean, if that's what the public wants, to spend, you know, maybe half a million dollar or $4,000, $400,000, and see what else we can tweak. You can't push it too much, 9:40 timeframe for elementary kids, too late to start learning, especially if they start their day at 6:30 daycare. I mean, there are people out there doing that, too. I mean, if you ask me, do you know how many? I don't know. But there are parents that take their kids to morning daycare. And those child, because you have to go to work and drive to Salem for work, you have to leave your house at 6:30, and you drop your kid for two hours. So those people are happy. Of course, this change is gonna help them with that side. So there are so many perspectives of it, and I don't think there's a perfect solution. You know, push, I mean, the perfect solution will be, you know, maybe not double our bus fleet, but maybe add another 10, 20, I don't know, the magic number, and make everybody go to school around 8:30. I mean, you know, that's the ideal thing. But where will the money comes? We don't see this crowd when we ask board of supervisors a penny. So, you know, you know, what I'm seeing, this is a great thing to do. I believe it's a great thing to do. It may not be perfect as it is presented, maybe we should have involve you more early. I mean, those can, we can argue those things, but the reality is, is what it is. And people are trying to get this point and working toward it past 17 years. I mean, we can stop wait a couple more years. But again, dilemma, or the questions that we need to answer, still the same question that we need to answer. Better childcare in the county? Affordable childcare in the county? I mean, those are not gonna go away if we do this now or do this in, in a year time. So that's, I'd like to say.
Okay, so with, with you saying, other places have done it and it works, what did they study to show that it worked? Did they show, study the impact on families? Did they study the impact, how many latchkey kids were created with that? How many kids were being left alone below that age of 13? You know? So how do we know it worked, other than on paper, it worked in some kinda way that people wanted it to work?
Well, as far as I can tell, none of them trying to go back. I mean, that's one indication that I can point out.
And that's because, that, that could be, because people said, we did it, we're not going back. Because we did it and we're not going back.
Well, I hope they're not doing that, knowing that, you know, there are disadvantages.
Well, you know, we, we just heard, we just heard the academic report saying, we have got things in place to study it. Are we gonna be studying the elementary, too? Are we just gonna be studying the high school?
But they are actually studying elementary, too.
Because it's, it's, I, I do not believe, I do not believe, again, this is not all about academics. Because as Mr. Lyons stated earlier.
Never academics.
And I've stated before, if we were failing and children were doing horrible, I'd be reaching for everything we could to make it better. But that's not the case. And with what we've done here, in the timeframe that we've done it, and quite frankly, in a, in a way that's been somewhat secretive? Even as a board member, I kinda feel that way? Kinda feel like I was just kinda left out of this, because it was already kinda predetermined, we're gonna do this and we're gonna do it quick? So to make sure that there was someone else who's not gonna come in and turn it over.
I also remember asking to be a part of the committee and was rejected to be a part of the committee, because they didn't want there to be an influence by a board member on that committee.
A board member who didn't agree?
Yes.
Because I asked the question, how these, how those committees and things were made up. So if we really feel we need to do something, I think we need to step back and really put things out there. One, look at this.
I mean, I would like to read that. I definitely would like to read that and learn from it, you know, I mean.
And include, and be more inclusive in how the process, if there's a change that will happen, would be, what that change would be and how it would look. Because we haven't. I mean, the fact that we sent a survey out last week asking about childcare.
Middle childcare.
Whatever is childcare.
Because demanded by the, the childcare centers, they just asked.
And, and, and if we had, if we had included.
They were late to ask.
If we had, exactly. They were late to ask, because maybe the right ones weren't there to put that question on the table.
I'm not gonna, you know, argue with that. I'm not comfortable with the childcare in general, so.
Um, and I'll say, I agree with you 100% with the over 60% starting at eight o'clock. I agree with you. High school should start at eight o'clock. It's 10 minutes. That survey you're talking about, or that, those documents are from eight o'clock on. Eight o'clock, not 8:50. And I don't, I've said from the get-go, why can't we find 10 minutes? Why can't we find 10 minutes? And that would put us in those same statistics. And I was approached by somebody who was asked to be on the committee, and he went to one meeting and said, it was a predetermined decision, and he never went back. And also, the person that stopped me in the mall said, my sister is in a district that has it and they hate it. They hate it. So.
And we've received emails today from parents who moved here from districts that had it and loved it and want us to come to.
One.
Want us to do it.
We have one email.
I've gotten more than one.
I mean, we do, we do here. Because they're not out here filling the room, doesn't mean that they exist. So I will always argue, there are people for this, too. But to make it perfect, to work, works for everybody, I mean, that's the board's, the aim should be.
Yeah.
As, as perfect as it can be. It's not like one part wants it the, against the other part. But it has to work. I mean, we have to, one of the things that, you know, the research was saying in one of the papers, that I can't remember which one, but you need to, you know, have a community buy-in. So I definitely feel strong about it, you know? I cannot make everybody perfect, and it may not fit in your private family, you know, routine individually, but we have to have, we have to provide, you know, main needs, with being childcare and being affordable, you know, childcare. So I think, I don't know what will the board's desire will be. I don't mind.
I mean, I, I think that this is something that, I mean, I think this is good dialogue. From, from my perspective, maybe I'm repeating myself, I hope I'm not, but from my perspective, I think that I agree with some of what, what Ms. Franklin said about, I certainly think that this could have been done better. I think one of the things, I mean, I learned a lot from talking with the Fairfax people, but certainly having stakeholder groups and, and, you know, we should have done more of that, we should have worked with them more and that kinda of a thing. Now, I don't know that the solution then is necessarily to just drop everything right now. I've taken a lot of flak for it, but I still think there has to be a good reason. And I think that if we're having trouble with the implementation, that's a good reason. If we can, if we can make some adjustments, that could be an even better solution. But, I mean, I hope we can find some consensus on this, but I don't, I don't think that I would vote to take any action right now. I don't think we have enough information. I haven't even gotten to ask all the questions of the implementation committee, so, you know?
Ask, they're right there. Go ahead.
I will.
Were you gonna ask?
Sure, I'll, I mean, if everybody else is done talking, I did wanna finish through some of that.
It's just midnight.
I know.
I'll be the first one, probably won't be the last one.
That's right.
So on the student safety issue, it was, you know, talking about putting up a FAC and talking to law enforcement and the possibility of increasing, you know, patrols at certain times, certain bus stops and things like that. Is safety more of a concern with the start time switch than it was before?
Yeah.
For, I'm, I'm asking for the committee.
Well, if it is, it cannot come out in our committee meeting.
When we pulled the committee together to meet, I mean, the main purpose of it was to bring to the table any concerns that folks had heard in, within the community. And our, our committee consisted of law enforcement from each area, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, as well as the, the outlined areas. It consisted of parents. And quite frankly, we purposefully chose some parents that we knew were not necessarily for the change.
Okay.
Because we felt like we would get better information from them about what the safety concerns were.
Okay. And so the findings of that committee was that safety is not any more of a concern than it is, I guess, currently?
Well, basically, what you saw on our slide, the concerns were, what you saw really aren't, it, it appears that it, there are no more concerns now than there were before. Except for children, younger children waiting out in the dark, in the mornings.
That's huge. I mean, that's, that's the big, that's the big issue.
Well, that is.
Which I think.
So if that, okay, you said, except for that issue, so then, what then? I mean, I guess, I, I guess what I'm expecting is I, I would expect the committee maybe to talk with law enforcement, maybe look at data at other counties, people that have, you know, we, there's a lot of, the implementation has happened numerous times all over the state and the coun, in the, in the county. Is there, are there things that other people are doing so that they don't have problems that we should be doing? Or?
When, when I spoke with other counties, and especially the counties around us, and the counties that have outlined areas such as Floyd and Giles County, they don't have concerns. They haven't had issues that have raised concerns where they needed to put any kind of specific strategies in place.
Okay. I have a question for the calendar committee. So the, the change on the half-days, it's, it'll, it'll save some money and it'll give the secondary staff some planning time? That, those are kinda the motivations for it? Is that correct? What effect will it have on just total hours of instruction? I mean, does that cause any problems with the overall school calendar? Because you're basically, you're cutting hours out of the school year, are you not?
Yes, I would, would cut out some, but again, the total hours of a school calendar is based on the shortest school day.
Okay.
And so it's not going to cut our total school hours that significantly.
Okay.
We're still gonna have well over the 990 hours needed for, to meet those, those state standards. So we're, we're not.
How much do we bank currently?
Yeah, someone gave numbers, I thought, about what we bank.
We have a, a, a large number of hours over, over the required.
Do you know what it is per day?
We, our, our numbers right now are based on a six-hour day.
Okay.
It's their shortest, shortest day. We have to base.
We have that data, we can, I can email that exactly to you, how many, how many hours, we just looked at today.
Yes, sir.
And I can't remember at this point.
Actually, I think it was Ms. Lacy that provided the numbers, it's in here.
Yeah, in the proposal.
Yes, and, and again, those hours, it can be misleading at times, because again, those, you can't, you can't go by elementary compared to secondary. Those hours are not, they're insignificant when you're looking at both of those. You have to go on the shortest day. That's what the state requires. Doesn't matter if it's a secondary day or an elementary day. The, the, the state requires that we, we count the shortest day, whatever that shortest day is, for our, our hours.
Which I absolutely remember when we added, I think it was 10 minutes to the day, when we didn't have enough hours banked.
Exactly.
And it, I swore I would never, ever vote for that, any, adding any time to a day again, because children were falling asleep. It was, it created so much turmoil. You think this was bad? That 10 minutes was horrible. So I'm, I'm just saying, when you, when you mess around with this, with the day, it causes a whole lot of problems for a whole lot of people, no matter how big or how small it is. As, as far as safety, I can't imagine that other counties don't have the same concerns we did, do in Floyd and Giles County. I cannot imagine that. It's just that it's not recorded.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
No.
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 What I would like to suggest for us to all read, that document that Ms. Lacy put together, including our Dr. Meyer and the administration team, and see from that what we can pull to make what has been, you know, presented to improve.
And let's add to that something with childcare, because I am not at all comfortable with what I'm hearing.
So is it something, is it something that the board will entertain, that idea?
Yes, I definitely would like for us to revisit this, probably at our first February meeting. Gives us all time to do some more research.
Yeah, I mean, I really like to read what is provided.
I had many intentions of making motions at night, tonight, but I think, given the late hour.
Yeah.
And given the fact that we do have some stuff that we can read.
Yeah.
I will.
And I want.
Put fun in making those motions.
I think I appreciate that, and I think, I'm sorry.
I would like to suggest, in the interest of, interest of saving some time in the future, is if we involve Mrs. Lacy and some of the other folks who helped put this together, sit down and go with our staff and go over it. So if there are things like the shortest day, that's where we get the bank time from, all that is bought out so that we're not gonna, they're not gonna come back, this is what we saw that wasn't right, this, and then folks say, that's not true, that's not true. Sit down together with a group of people from both sides, talk about it, or with our staff, talk about it to see if that's actually what happens in our district, and if it will work or will not work, versus going two or three, four more meetings, going back and forth.
I mean, I totally agree, I was hoping to, you know, when I talked to Ms. Lacy, I hoped to get that document ahead, but it's a very voluminous document, and I'm sure she did not have a lot of free time in her hand to put it together. So, and also, I want our administration and our superintendent, our assistant superintendents to read that, so we wanna make sure what is proposed is doable, or anything, but I mean, with due respect, I'm sure it is thorough job, but it still needs to be looked at it, it's that everything is, you know, can be done, and what kind of a tweak we can do what, you know, we voted for, or what previous superintendent recommended for us.
So I'm still not clear what that looks like, as far as our folks are gonna look at it, they're gonna come back and give us a presentation as to what they found here?
How we can, how we can improve what has been already voted for? Because I know things are not, we are not comfortable, that's of course, besides the childcare factor, I don't think reading this may answer that or not, but at least in terms of the time tweaking, to make it a little later for the elementary kids to go, if their proposal is better than what we have, why not, you know, tweak it with that?
I agree, I'm, I'm just saying, in this, for the sake of time, if we can bring some of those folks in and talk about this at the same time that we're looking at it.
Maybe time saved.
Then it's some time saved because we're not, they're not tweaking it to say, we can do this, and they're saying, no, you can do more, or you should have done that.
I understand.
Sit down, come together and say, okay.
Is it something?
No, that doesn't work, yes, this does work, how come that doesn't? If we're still not happy, we're not happy, but at least we've sat down together, there's some transparency and inclusion into what we may come up with, instead of, here, here's what we've come up with again, what do you all think?
I mean, I agree, you know, what you're saying.
I will point out that, at least in what I'm seeing here, the proposed compromise is not a tweak, it is to flip back and delay everything later.
I was gonna say, it's, it's really the two options, again, it's either flip and delay, or you delay, right? So, I mean, I think that's kind of where we're at, so, I mean, I, I'm happy to, I'm certainly gonna read it, I'm happy to sit down with people, I actually, we had a meeting with Ms. Lacy and another parent, and offered to meet with, and offered to meet with others, and I'm continually happy to do so, because I do wanna find a solution, and I encourage the other board members to, you know, I hope we can talk amongst ourselves in the meantime, too. I mean, I do think we kind of, we need to move on this.
And let me say, you'll have questions when you leave here, you have questions now. If you have questions in terms of answers that you need, please email those to me or give me a call, so we can actually find out and get good information, data, the best we possibly can, so you all can make a decision as to, and one thing that I wanna look more into is actual, the childcare, and see how we can get more information in terms of childcare, and, and, and take a look at what we've done to get the information we already have, so.
And, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go back to the safety issue, because I know what this county looks like, and what it's, what it's like for some kids to have to, quite frankly, walk out of a holler that's dark, to be able to even get to the bus, and how safe that actually is for, quite, four and five-year-olds. I mean, that's a huge issue, I don't care how you wanna look at it, or how you wanna say it, there's less kids than there was before, but they're babies. The safety piece is huge.
Your concern is the, that it'd be dark? Because presumably, those kids are still, they're doing that now, but they're doing it an hour later, right? Is that what you mean?
No, I mean, if, with the proposed change that it is now, we will have four and five-year-olds in the dark, walking to the bus in very rural areas of the county, where there are, may be no buddies, there may be no other neighbors.
No, I understand that, but those four and five, there's four and five-year-olds that live in rural parts of the county now that are walking to the bus stop, too, right? They're just not doing it in the dark, so it's the dark that, I'm just trying to get to the.
That's, that's part of it, and we don't know that they're doing that now, they may be going to childcare first thing in the morning. The issue is with some folks, they have to do the childcare in the morning, and now they're gonna have to do it in the evening, too, in the afternoon. So they're, they're gonna get hit twice with childcare. So that's a part of that, too, but the, the whole safety thing is in the dark, in rural areas.
But that's something that, you know, I mean, we can, I think we can mitigate that one.
Not, not the way it is.
I'm Sheriff Parton, I'm sorry to bother you, but I'll be listening to this.
I don't think we can do that, Sheriff, so, I'm sorry.
Then you need to ask me to come back to speak on the safety piece.
Thank you.
We will do that, appreciate that.
Be a, be a part of the discussion with the folks who are doing it.
So where are we?
Thank you.
I think we had, we had.
Well, Dr. Meyer, do you or staff need any additional direction for this? Or if you want questions from us? Where do you wanna go from here?
Yeah, we need direction, we need questions, what do you want us to look into that we haven't looked into deep enough? You know, we need, we need to know what you need to know, to make the decision, and so, you know, please give me that, that information. Okay?
You need more than six and a half months to implement this, if you don't have answers yet, that's what you need.
Please don't, don't speak from the public, please.
I think for me, the, obviously, the childcare piece, I need, I think, I'd like to see more number, I'd like to see more numbers on that, I'd like to see where the availability is, or where it can be, I'd like to see where the, you know, the estimates on, on what's needed.
Scholarships.
And, yeah.
And I don't know, and maybe that's asking for a lot, I don't know, but I don't know that we can really move forward without that.
So, help me understand why all these questions weren't asked when we made the decision, not we.
Yes.
But the board made the decision. These are all the questions that I asked and said then, and now we're at the door, going, okay, well, this don't look so good, wow, I don't know about this, I don't know about that. This was all said then. All of this was said then, and we're worried about why we're knocking at the door, you know?
Sorry.
I don't think all that was worked out then, we just made the decision to move forward with the start time change. The committees were in charge of putting that information together for us.
To see.
To see that that was going along at the right pace.
So we made a decision with insufficient information.
Right, and here we are, because I asked that question when the committees were formed, wait a minute, shouldn't we have had that information in the beginning? I asked that question before we made the decision, it, you know, to make a decision, let's do the change and let's see how it's gonna affect everything, and if we can support it. I asked that question, and board members and the superintendent acted like I was crazy.
To give you more direction, I would like to personally invite Sheriff Parton back for our safety aspect of this.
That should speak huge.
And give him as much time as he needs.
Second.
Is that okay, Sheriff Parton, next meeting, actually do a presentation for our board? Thank you so much.
And I guess, just looking, you know, we obviously have only had a couple minutes to look at this, but as I indicated, the proposal is somewhat similar to one of the options that was initially rejected, so we obviously want to see again why that was the case.
And again, I don't know how I'm gonna say this again, I believe that Ms. Lacy and other folks should be involved in that conversation before it comes back to the board, so that we have some kind of collaboration, even if we don't agree with what the outcome may be, at least folks were sitting at the table having the discussion about how we got here, why it works, why it won't work, can we integrate this into what we have, or do we need to do something completely different? Because the clock is ticking, and that could take three, four meetings to hear the push back and forth, and six months and we still don't know what we're doing? I agree, it, it's not, that's not a good situation, not at all.
Now that it's, we gave the directions, and we'll go from there, I will move us to the unfinished business. Any, any more members have unfinished business? This one we want of them. Other than this one. If not, we'll go to the new business. Any board members have a new business item? How about some announcements and information that any board members like to share?
How's that two-hour delay looking?
Haven't looked at the weather for about six hours.
Get on your phone. I would just like to share what a great concern and loss we had with one of our teachers' wives passing at Christiansburg in our math department, and it was really, really tragic and really, really sad, and I would like to share my heartfelt concern for he and his family, because that was a true travesty.
When you look at the upcoming school board meetings for members, the next one is January twenty-sixth at seven o'clock, our second meeting on the budget discussion, and we have the February meetings and then joint board of supervisor meetings, and keep in mind that we picked those dates for possible Christiansburg feasibility study community forums. So with that being said, I will adjourn the meeting at twenty after twelve, midnight.